Are we, are we ready in the, in the balcony? You ready for us? Yay, thumbs up, two thumbs up. Okay. All right, staff, uh, staff, hello staff, they're ready in the balcony, so that means we're all ready. Okay. All right, and we've got, okay, and I know our Vice Mayor is on her way. Okay, I am going to call this meeting to order. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Council meeting for the city of Alameda. Tonight is Tuesday, May 13, 2025, and we are about to call to order a special City Council meeting, and I'd like to start by asking Councilmember Toni Desong to please lead us in the pledge.
Stand as you are able. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Desong. Madam Clerk Laura Weisiger, would you please call the role?
Yes, Councilmembers Bowler, Desong, Jensen, Mayor Ezzy Ashcraft, four present, and Vice Mayor Pryor, as you said, will be joining us hopefully momentarily.
Okay, so, um, the next item then is oral communications, but this is oral communications on non-agenda items, so something that's not on the agenda but a matter over which the council has jurisdiction, will take five, uh, fifteen minutes at this time, and all the comments under oral communication have to be in person, and if there are any remaining speakers after the fifteen minutes is up, there's another opportunity at the end of the agenda. Do we have any speakers under oral communications?
We do not.
Okay, we have none, so we will move on to item three with, which is our workshop, which I'm going to ask the city clerk to, uh, explain, and also how we are going to proceed, because it's, it's a little unusual.
Yes, it is. So this, this is a budget workshop for fiscal years 25, 26, and 26, 27 to provide direction that will be incorporated into budget adoption hearing materials for City Council consideration in June, and the City Council started this workshop on Monday, May 5th, and continued this portion of this till, to tonight. The staff has provided new information and a new presentation that will be given tonight, so public comment will be allowed again. So you, it'll be kind of the regular flow, the staff will give the presentation, you can do the council questions, and we'll still call public, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, as I understand it, Madam City Manager, the Assistant City Manager, Amy Waldridge, is going to lead off on the budget workshop, and then maybe followed by our new Finance Director. Okay, so Assistant City Manager Waldridge.
Absolutely, thank you, Mayor.
We're getting the slides up.
Getting the slides up, we're working the slides, so welcome to the continuation, and this is a follow-up of the biennial budget, fiscal year 25, 27, next slide. Do you want me to totally, start working on our logistics? Apologize. So, this simply is the agenda for tonight. We're continuing with the Department Operating Budget Proposals, and specifically addressing council requests and discussion and direction from our last meeting on, last week, on May 5th, and then after that, we will turn it over to Public Works Director Erin Smith, who will be presenting the capital projects budget, and looking for direction and discussion from council on that.
Perfect.
So, we wanted to start with a discussion and, a presentation about social services. There was a lot of discussion at the last meeting around the positions that were requested, so I wanted to take the time to provide more context about the social services program that staff is proposing. I want to personally apologize for not having provided this information at the last meeting, realize that we kind of missed the mark on giving council the full context of what we were proposing, and the information you needed to provide, to make an informed decision for this particular quest, request. So that is what we are starting with tonight. So, starting with, what is social services, and what do we mean by that? Social services encompasses provision of resources and support, particularly for vulnerable populations, so that may be people who are homeless, people who are at risk of homelessness, people who are seniors, who are low income, people who are undocumented, so vulnerable populations that need that additional support. The resources that are included and provided through social services really is a wide range. We talked a lot last time about homelessness, and a portion of this is about that, and I'll get into that in a minute, but it's also providing information about, and access to, about healthcare, about public benefits, like SNAP for food insecurity, about unemployment, housing, mental health, so really a wide range of issues that it covers. I really want to emphasize this last bullet, and note that there is an intersection of homelessness and mental health, but not all homeless have mental health needs, and not all people who need social services are homeless or have mental health needs, right? So there's an intersection of those three things, but they're not necessarily all one in the same. So, wanted to give you some context on what we currently provide today, the city. So, we have Village of Love, we contract with them to provide our homeless outreach team, what we call HOT. That's our mobile team that goes out and makes contact with unhoused individuals in our community on the streets. What HOT does is they make that initial contact, and then they support people transitioning, getting them over to the day center and overnight, uh, emergency overnight shelter. In fiscal year, to give you some context, in fiscal year 2024, overall, we made 1,475 contacts with unhoused people. Of that, just over 1,000, 1,031 were Village of Love making the initial, staff making initial contact, and 444 were city staff making the initial contact. So we average about 47 calls per month from our homeless hotline, and then we follow up from there. So really, HOT, so far in our current structure, the homeless outreach team provides the initial contact, but they have limited ongoing case management to really get that person to resolution of the services they need, and we'll talk more about that in a minute. Then we have HHS, our Housing and Human Services Division. It's a division of the City Manager's office, it's all city staff. HHS coordinates all social services, including but not limited to housing and human ser, housing and homelessness. Our HHS leadership, which is our HHS manager, Simone Falls, who is here to answer questions, and I also meant, wanted to mention in the beginning, we also have Library Director Mike Eitner, both of them are here to answer any questions after this presentation. We have the HHS manager, and we have a program manager that reports to her, they spend significant time supporting individual cases of folks out on the street, because it's beyond the capacity of what the current HOT team can do. And really, we see that as an inefficient use of city resources, because you have a higher level, high-paid people who are on a management, mid-management level, doing this direct case management, when their time could be spent on identifying and managing revenue sources, better, you know, improving data management, improving, continuing with overall program management, there's a lot more management-level things they could be doing. What this program will provide is appropriate staffing levels for that direct outreach, and for that ongoing case management, individualized case manage, management to get people to resolution. Currently, we also have two part-time case managers in HHS. One is focused on homeless prevention, and one is focused on case management with unhoused individuals, and that person working with homeless individuals is, their time is split 50/50, so 12 hours working on street outreach and encampments, and 12 hours at the library. And then there's the care team. HHS and HOT both coordinate closely with the care team, it's an important part of our overall services. They respond when an individual is in acute mental health crisis, and then they work with Alameda Family Services that provides follow-up case management. So as I mentioned previously, it's important to note that care team responds to everybody. A portion of who they respond to are homeless, but not all homeless people have mental health issues, let alone in acute crisis, so there is, there's more work to be done with people who are not under a care team's purview. I like this grid, because it really, I'm not going to go through one by one, but it really shows the intersection and the differences of what the care team does and what the social service work is. And so, social service worker and case managers are really out there, either, you know, out in the community, whether it's on the street or library or elsewhere, providing services directly to individuals, whether it's social services, shelter, housing, all of those areas I talked about before. And then the care team is really about acute mental health crisis intervention, when somebody has reached a crisis point, they may or may not transport them to emergency medical and mental health facilities, you know, and, and, and all of these groups are trained in de-escalation and redirection. So the goal of this social services program really is to be proactive rather than reactive, to work with people to provide support before they reach crisis, and then require a care team and police intervention. So, talking about what we've accomplished with the staffing we have so far that I've talked about, within the existing framework and staffing levels, we've had some successes and have built the foundation of this program with these new positions that are requested, one for homeless street outreach and one for the library. It, the goal is to create capacity to help more people, and also to help bring individual cases to full resolution for services and housing. At the library, what we've accomplished, we've created a point of contact with that part-time individual, 12 hours a week, we've created a dedicated space, so people know that this service is there. However, we've really found that it's not enough time or staff capacity to meet the needs, or have consistent programming. An example is, you know, they have people at the library who will come looking to meet with this person, but there's just not enough hours of the day that they're there, that they can capture all the people looking for services. Another example at the library is, there was a person, you know, we, we have people sometimes, as Karen Zeltzer mentioned at Council meeting last week, talking about case management, who exhibit news, what we call nuisance or troublesome behaviors at the library. They're not necessarily, they're not acute mental health behaviors, but they might be yelling, or getting in someone's personal space, or just, it's inappropriate, what are considered inappropriate behaviors that are a nuisance for other patrons of the library. There was an example of someone who is an ongoing patron of the library, who is unhoused, was exhibiting these troublesome behaviors, and the part-time case manager was able to sit down with them, just learn their name, learn who they are, start to develop some trust, and even with a limited amount of interaction they did have, it was enough that that person knew that it shifted their behaviors, and so they, it started improving stat, library staff interactions with them, and other patron interactions with them. It takes a lot of time to build people's trust. You can imagine if people are on the streets and have been pushed out of our system and are on the edges of our society, they learn to not trust, and so when doing case management, it takes a lot of time, and is very intensive, to build that trust, to then help a person be willing to accept services and move to services. With HHS, we cleared the Main Street encampment, that was a really big deal. It was there for years, and it's now fully cleared. We've created the homeless prevention program, and we now have mitigated encampments in populated areas such as parks, business districts, and the civic center garage, and we prioritize that, so if someone encamps in one of those areas, we work with them to provide services but quickly move them on. So now I want to talk about what the gaps are, and what, this is essentially, what's the goal, what are we trying to solve for? As I mentioned, HOT, as it currently exists, does very, does limited case management, even just getting by what we call vital documents. If someone is, in order for someone to get into housing, they need their driver's license, they need all this different documentation, and oftentimes when they're moving encampments, those documents get lost, or burned, or, you know, and they need to go get them again, and think about how long, how hard it is for us to go to the DMV, but it can be time-intensive to get an individual, to get just their driver's license. So, this will provide more staff capacity to help individuals do those kinds of things, as well as develop trust, so that they'll accept the services. And I, and, and also I want to circle back to the fact for, that we have, while we have cleaned up Main Street encampment, if, we are moving people on now, more frequently, and, and so, but we need to also develop trust, so as people are moving, we can still connect with them and still get them into the services that they need. And just as the unhoused impact on the broader community's quality of life, just as unhoused people impact a broader community's quality of life due to these unwanted behaviors, the library experiences the same impacts. It's basically a microcosm of Alameda, where everybody can find a place of refuge, compassion, support, including homeless and other vulnerable populations like seniors and low-income people. And so there is a need that has surfaced, really libraries have changed over the last 10, 20 years. People don't go just to check out a book anymore, but they go to ask comp, and they ask complex resource questions. I need help figuring out who to call with this medical question. I need help figuring out how to access public benefits, and while library staff do have access and handouts to give to people, a lot of these questions are more complex than they are trained or knowledgeable to be able to navigate. And so this would provide an expert who can answer those social services questions, as well as provide case management for people who are unhoused, or for other people needing services. There was talk last time, so I just wanted to reiterate that library workers do receive de-escalation training, some have even received trauma-informed care and mental health first aid. However, it's, it's, the librarians, it's not their initial wheelhouse, right? And so, they're really needing someone else to support them through, through incidences that require de-escalation. So how can we improve social services here in Alameda? What this will do is create improved outcomes for individuals, invulnerable populations, as well as for the broader community. Our goal, and we believe we can do, is help decrease the number of people living on the streets, decrease the number of behavior disruptions at the library, and improve safety for staff and community, and also minimize people moving their encampments around the city, as I mentioned, because we want to create the depth to do individualized case management, instead move them into shelter or other appropriate services, instead of just moving them around the city. We also want to be able to de-escalate and have the skillsets to do that, so we don't get to the crisis points. It's more cost-effective for the city, it's better for the individuals, and, and the patrons, and, and other folks, to be proactive rather than reactive, and wait for it to get to escalation point, and be calling the care team. Also, just wanted to mention that we'll be reporting progress to social service human, we would report progress regularly, probably quarterly, to Social Services Human Relations Board, and we're now coming to City Council every year through the Road Home and Report, and we'd be reporting out outcomes through that as well. So with that, this just encapsulates what the proposal is. The propos, we, we took your direction from the conversation last time to really create a more integrated program. This program's scope would be to connect unhoused individuals on the street, in the library, and in the community, and provide that ongoing case, individualized case management, and get them to resolution, whatever that looks like for them. At the library, we'd provide that case management, we'd also provide social services resources for everyone, continue supporting and training library staff. We would respond directly to behavioral health issues before it becomes a crisis, and provide programming, like we, you may recall, we were providing supper and support, which was a great program, and we could provide more, we could create more of those programming. The other thing is that this is a cost savings. It's, we, by eliminating the Village of Love contract, we're able to provide, what we're provoke, proposing with this new staff, is less costly, and is a overall programmatic cost savings of 76,700 by bringing this service in-house to HHS. And so what that is, is to bring in one social worker, it's a, the exact classification is a program specialist two under HHS in year one, and in year two to add one full-time social worker at the library, that would report to HHS and be part of that team, because that's really where they can get the support they need to do that work. We are also looking into options to fill our part-time positions with people who are working toward a master's or bachelor's of social work. The, with these interns, it's a potential conduit for them to fulfill their required hours and create a career pathway. I've been doing research on this over the last week or so. Cal State East Bay is starting a BSW program, which is actually very cool and exciting, and that might be a more realistic option, but I've been having a lot of conversations with AFS and Karen Zeltzer to understand what's required, the requirements for having MSW or BSW interns. So for example, to have an MSW intern, you have to have a licensed clinician, social worker, to supervise them, and you have to have that supervisor on-site with them. So there are some logistical things we have to figure out, but it's, it's an interesting opportunity that we would continue to, to explore. So that concludes my portion of the report, and I would love to pass it off to Finance Director Ross McCarthy.
You know what I would love to do, is to stay on this topic of the library and social services, because if I, if I understand correctly, Finance Director McCarthy was going to go on and talk about the other budget requests that we carried over. Let's, I want to stay topical, if you will, please. So, let's see if there are any clarifying questions about what we just heard from our Assistant City Manager before going to public comment. I'm going to start with a question, and thank you for all the updated information, Assistant City Manager, I appreciate it. When I, when we were talking last week, and I discovered that we indeed had, I guess for the past year, had these two part-time caseworkers at the library, I thought it was two, because wasn't, was that not what you told me?
No, what I, and I'm sorry if it was somehow miscommunicated or misunderstood, it, we have, we have two part-time people, but one is focused on prevent, they both report to HHS, and one is focused on homelessness prevention, and the second is focused on homelessness, and that person focused on homelessness splits their time half on street outreach, and half at the library. So it's 12 hours at the library, and 12 hours out on street outreach.
Okay, I must have misunderstood that when I wrote it into my notes. And then just to be clear on the ask, is it, are we talking about a request for two social workers, one for, I'm on page 10, so adds a full-time licensed social worker in HHS, and then the next bullet point adds a full-time licensed social worker at the library who reports to HHS? Is that two different licensed social workers?
That's correct. The second one would be starting in year two, is, is the current proposal.
Okay. Well, when we get into our discussion, I will want to explore why a full-time social worker couldn't go back and forth between both of those positions, and I'll also want to explore. to explore about remote work versus in-person work at, in HHS, but that's more in the discussion. Okay, I think that is all my clarifying questions. Other clarifying questions before we go to public comment? Vice Mayor Pryor.
It's really-
In your mic.
Sorry. It's really similar to what the mayor just asked. So is the one-year position that starts in year one, that's, is that in addition to the two part-time?
Correct, because we're, we're taking over all of this, the mobile street outreach.
Okay, so it would be one full-time person and then two part-time. How many hours would this, so right now it's 12 hours at the library based on the, one of the part-time positions. So how many, how many hours would the library get with this setup?
Yeah, our plan is to maintain the 12 hours at the library for year one and then move those hours back out to the street and then bring in a full-time person for year two is the proposal.
Okay. Okay, that was my question.
Okay. Any other clarifying questions? Do we have public comment? Oh, sorry, Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you. I, continuing on this, how will, the two permanent part-time PPT social workers that are in place now are, they report to Ms. Falls, to Director Falls? Is that correct?
They report, report to our program manager who reports to-
And is that program manager a social worker, MSW, or?
She is. We recently hired someone, Camille Rodriguez, and she is an MSW.
Okay. And so then both, then the, the new position will report, similarly report to the-
Will report to Camille Rodriguez. And just to clarify, she is an MSW and she oversees all social services. So, you know, for example, Alameda ACCOAF or Alameda Collaboration for Children, Youth, and Families and other programming, and so not just homelessness.
Okay, well, I, I have other questions about the reporting and organizational, the org chart for Health and Human Services, but I won't ask them now. So you said that there's, right now, there's about 47 calls a month that are going to the homeless outreach team at Village of Love?
To the hotline, yes, that are being reported.
And those will all be coming in to the new structure to, coming directly to HHS?
Right. We already have access to that, but yes, we would be taking those, responding to those calls.
And is there any savings in the contract with Village of Love? Is that-
There is. There's almost $77,000-
And that's what's being used for the-
Savings overall, correct.
For the new position? Okay. Yeah, those are my questions for now. Thanks.
Following up on Councilmember Jensen's question, so how long has Camille Rodriguez been with the city?
I think she's in week three, three or four.
Okay, but these part-time caseworkers have been here in the library for a year, so who were they reporting?
Well, she's not in a new position. That position was previously filled by Marcy Johnson.
So for the past year, who has been, who have the caseworkers been reporting to for the past year?
They were previously reporting to Marcy, and then we made some changes, and at one point they were reporting to Grecia, who is our other program manager. But they've always been reporting to our program manager level position.
And was Marcy Johnson, is Marcy Johnson an MS, a licensed?
No, she's not.
Okay, and what about Grecia?
No.
Okay, so when then did Camille Rodriguez start to do the, did they start reporting to Ms. Rodriguez?
They've been reporting to her since she started, and three or four weeks ago.
All right, thank you. Okay, time for public comment, I think. Public comment?
We have two in-person and one remote so far. Teri Rose.
Not on this topic.
Oh, it's on the other one.
Sorry, yeah, so we got two budget items today.
We got one here then, just for three, I wrote three instead of three B. I'm so sorry. We'll hold off on that one. Gabriel Duncan.
Welcome, Speaker Duncan.
Hi, my name's Gabriel Duncan. I'm a resident of Alameda, and I fully support adding not only these two positions, but actually, if you have enough money to make them both full-time. One thing that I've noticed when I talk to people who are in this industry that are providing social services to people is that they're constantly underwater. They're always overwhelmed by the amount of people that they're forced to help. And I say forced to because they only have a certain amount of their own time and, and energy to do this. So being able to provide as much support in the way of staff is, is going to be a blessing, not only for them, but it's going to allow them to deliver the services and the care that people here need. So I totally support this and I hope you can find even more money. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Is remote. Lee Volin.
Oh, welcome, Speaker Volin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our libraries and staff have served us well over the years, meeting ever-widening needs graciously. Our library has met the challenges of bringing its citizens into the digital world as opted in to provide homework tutoring, second language help, basic reading skills, and amazing children's programming, from kindergarten readiness to summer reading program that now hosts upward of 2,000 kids a year. Along with all of this, the library has become an information hub for career guidance, help with tax and social welfare forms, and more and more, working with the homeless and the marginalized. There are people who have no place to go in the rain, people who can't afford needed drugs, childcare workers who must take the children out because parents are working at home, upstanding people who desperately need help when suddenly they don't have enough. People in crisis is now normal, and as a city, it's time to step up and begin to provide the social caregiving services our citizens do need now and will, will need much more in, very shortly. It's time to stop assuming the library staff can do human services and information. They are the people everyone looks to for answers, but talking someone down from a bipolar high, working with someone to find a place to stay, facing belligerent aggression or being threatened by book banners, needs someone with a different set of skills. I applaud the human services and the library. I would like to provide their, our citizens and library staff with a full-time skilled social worker, and ask that you vote to include this in the budget and open the hiring process immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
That was our last one.
Okay, with that, we will close public comment. I, I'm going to take the lead on this one because I've spent a bit of time over the past week discussing this item with our Assistant City Manager and our City Manager. And first of all, I agree and believe everything that's being said about the challenges that our library staff are facing. It's real. And what I want more than anything is to make sure we have an effective program in place before we start deciding that we're going to allocate more money. I want to make sure that we have an understanding of how we are going to address the problem. And so it was, it was news to me that we already for a year had had some caseworker assistance in the library. As I think I understood, the supervision of that caseworker, the part-time caseworker, was not by staff who were licensed social workers. So, and I understood too from my conversation that there was burnout. It's difficult work and, and there was burnout from doing that. But I think we need, I, as a council member, can make better and more informed decisions if I have all the necessary information, and I feel like I'm still learning it. What I would love to see is a plan. I appreciate that now we have Camille Rodriguez, who is a licensed social worker who will be overseeing whomever we decide should be hired, but this is very new. She's been here a matter of weeks. And so I'd like a plan about what that would look like. I'd also like an understanding of what the last year looked like, because obviously some success, some progress was made, and that's good. But there, you know, I hope statistics were kept and so there's an idea of, you know, what kinds of services need to be offered. And then I want to both make good use of the resources we already have. So I know from discussions with staff in HHS and former staff, to be fair, that the model, and it's in other departments too, but not all of our departments where people can work remotely. It's just that if you have caseworkers and who are needed when someone is in crisis, or say, library staff is dealing with a difficult patron, that can't be addressed remotely. So I'd like a sense of how perhaps there might be some restructuring, because it, it does occur to me that, I do understand that HHS is located in City Hall West, not in City Hall, which is just across the street from the library, but we're not that big a city. But it seemed to me that where there were times when a caseworker couldn't be there, or perhaps a caseworker was working with another individual. And that's how I even came to discover that we'd had a caseworker for the last year, because I was talking to the Assistant City Manager and I said, you know, caseworkers and social workers need privacy. You can't just meet with your client out in the open. And I was told, well, yeah, there's the office, and I thought it was offices, but at least upstairs in the library, a dedicated office. And that was stated in the, the materials here, that there's space. So that's good, but sometimes that person might be busy, but could they not, someone from the library get on the phone and call out to HHS and say, hey, we could use a caseworker over here. Please send someone over. And then when it comes to, and it's all valid, and I don't dispute it for a minute, the need to get personal documents through driver's license, social security, Med-Cal. I recently went through the experience of getting a real ID in person at the DMV, and my goodness, I could have used someone to help. Actually, my daughter was with me, but, but anyway, those are important services. But I'm thinking that those also might, that might be a knowledge base that staff at HHS has. And so would it not be possible to connect them with these folks in addition to, in order to allow social worker, caseworker, whomever we decide should be hired, to be working one-on-one with these individuals? And then, yes, the idea of using an MSW, and Assistant City Manager told us about another program, is something that I had learned about from Alameda Family Services. I do a quarterly check-in with Catherine Schwartz, the Executive Director of Alameda Family Services. And at our last check-in in the last month, she was telling me how excited she was that they'd just hired their new crop of MSWs. And they need all these hours, like thousands of hours of, of casework in order to get their degrees. And this helps to strengthen the pipeline of mental health workers that we very much need. So I would love to see more use of that. And, you know, we'll figure out the supervision part, but I want to just make sure that we're using the resources we have now and that our departments are working together and communicating and sharing resources. I, there's a library strategic plan that is underway, and I was just interviewed about it today. And one of the things the interviewer asked is, and does the library work with other city departments? And I said, oh, well, you know, I think so. And I, I named a couple, but it did make me think a little bit more about it. So the, let's see. And do I remember, is there, did we authorize a van? Is there a transport van, Assistant City Manager?
It's not been authorized, but there is an ADA accessible van that is part of the budget proposal that was discussed.
Okay.
And I'm happy to address any of these points whenever.
Absolutely. And what, and on that point, so could the, this, assuming the van is, is approved, and I would certainly be inclined to do so, could it be used to say, bring folks who need help getting their documents and whatnot over to HHS where people would be, you know, ready to assist them? So I have thrown a lot at you. If you'd want to take a minute or several and answer them, that'd be great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. All good points. So it, I'll start with remote work. I want to start with the fact that not all HHS staff are doing or trained for work for, working with unhoused population. For example, we have a management analyst that focuses on doing CDBG and home and that more analytical stuff and those agreements. We have an office assistant. So there are other positions that lend themselves more to work from home. I agree in terms of these positions, the case managers and the, and the full-time social worker would not be work from home. They were never intended to be work from home positions. Those are full-time, in, you know, here in Alameda positions, either they'll need some office time, but a lot of it will also be out working with people. So it's a combination of both, but none of it will be remote. I want to clarify too, because I misspoke and Ms. Falls reminded me, so we currently have two part-time positions, but in how we've worked our baseline budget, we, we plan to actually have three part-time positions to support, just to have enough coverage as for the mobile outreach for seven days a week, which is what we currently do and what we plan to continue.
So is that two part-time caseworkers at the library?
No.
Okay.
It's, it's still, it still would remain 12 hours, half of a part-time at the, at the library, and, because we need enough time to, people power, to respond out to calls that we get for people out on the streets seven days a week. So that's what the part-time would be focused on, as well as 12, continuing 12 hours a week for the first year at the library until if and when we, if we get authorization for a second position, then that would replace the part-time at the library. You also mentioned the van. That was absolutely the intention of the van, is what you said. It's not only to transport, it's for transportation. It's for our caseworkers to be able to transport people to the DMV to get their driver's license, to the day center. We often will have someone who's here because they think City Hall, and I'll look for resources at City Hall, and they'll come here and I'll talk to them, and then we'll transport them over to the day center where they can get the appropriate services. So the van will be used for all of those purposes. And you mentioned departments working together and sharing resources, and I just really want to emphasize that that is what's already happening. We've built a strong foundation over this last year, and that's been the goal of what we've been doing with part-time. The 12 hours of part-time case manager at the library reports to HHS and works closely with them. And so by starting that foundational program, we've, it's helped us understand what the gaps are and understand that our current structure really provides that limited case management, and we're not doing, as I said, that full resolution to getting someone into housing and to services all the time. Sometimes we are, but not as often as we would like to. And so that's really the goal of this program, is to fill that gap that we've identified with the limited services we've been able to provide so far. We feel there's more we can do, is really what this is intended for.
Okay, thanks. Other, okay, and I'll, I want to hear from my colleagues, and I want to do this in a kind of discussion forum, because this is a big issue. Vice Mayor, do you want to, do you want to go next?
Sure. I don't have, I, thank you for the information. There was a lot of things. I also, I do like the idea of having a social worker there. Just, I think you had mentioned it, is the, to prevent any, you know, high-level or volatile behavior. So I think it would help reduce things. But also, you know, there are people probably in the library that are calm and behaving but need help and maybe not getting it because they are, you know, they're behaving, but they, they might have the same needs. And so that's, I see another value of having someone there. And that's it.
Okay. Councilmember Jensen, I'll kind of go to one side and then the other. Councilmember?
Thank you. Does the part-time library, MSW- Does the part-time library, MSW have regular hours? I'm a little confused about how that works.
Yeah, so the current case managers are not MSWs. We, we hire people that have work. There's a lot of people that do work in social services and with homeless people who are not necessarily MSWs. It takes a lot of time and effort and money to become an MSW. But there's a lot, right now, our contract with Village of Love, they really focus on hiring people with lived experience. And we've also tried to do that where we can with our part-time case managers. In terms of regular hours, yes, we set up regular hours at the library. We've had some changes because as the mayor mentioned at one point, you know, it's, it's a hard position to fill and maintain. It's not benefited, you know, and so we continue to do our best to keep those positions consistently staffed. But when they're staffed, we do set regular hours at the library so people know when to expect them there.
Well, I appreciate that and I appreciate the accomplishments in the presentation, including the establishment of the library caseworker, case manager. And so with regard to that, what we've heard in the last budget meeting and in this budget meeting and from a caller as well, is that library director, staff and volunteers are requesting a social worker. So it just doesn't seem like that caseworker is meeting the needs, I guess, of what you anticipated a social worker would be doing, even though they, as you say, are there regularly and have the ability to provide some referrals and some services. Is that, is that accurate?
I would respectfully disagree. It's that there is more need than we have staff, current staff time for. 12 hours a week with the large, Director Reitner can say how many hours the library is open. I don't know off the top of my head, but it's a lot. And it, 12 hours is a small portion of that. And so I would say that they've been effective with what they've done so far. And we've seen individual cases where they've been able to make inroads, as I mentioned. It's just that the need is much greater than what we're currently offering.
And so with that, then the, the request would be, as I understand it, to have a new full-time so, social worker to continue the two part-time caseworkers or case managers.
The baseline budget include, is, includes our part-time. That's already part of our baseline budget is our, is our part-time staff.
So two part-time in the baseline to continue. Add another part-time, add a full-time in this year and then next year add a full-time.
It's only, we're only making full-time requests. The requests, we could pull the slide up again if it's helpful, but we're requesting one.
Well, that's okay, but, but you mentioned, sorry to interrupt, but you said that there were three.
We were able to figure that out within our baseline budgets. We're not asking for additional funds for that position.
Okay.
Could we just let her finish the sentence, which she was going to tell us, what the baseline budget? Just finish your sentence, if you would, please. Baseline budget includes.
The baseline budget includes, we, we are covering, all of our part-time expenses are included in the baseline budget already. We're not asking for additional funds for part-time. The request is for one full-time position for, that will be doing primarily street outreach and will be working with the case managers. We will continue to have the same level of part-time at the libraries we currently have in that first year. In year two, we would, we're requesting a second full-time social worker that would replace that part-timer doing 12 hours a week. So we would then have 40 hours a week at the library instead of 12.
Mayor, can I, do you mind if I just add? I just want to make also clear is that we're eliminating the hot team that's providing the contract services. So that one position for street outreach is essentially supplanting the need for the contract work. We think we can have a more integrated and enhanced program by bringing it in-house and not having a contractor do that. So I just want to make sure that's clear.
So the, the full-time street outreach, that's replacing the hot team. And then the same level of part-time caseworkers, so one caseworker for 12 hours a week in the baseline budget?
Okay, so our, let me see if I can explain it more clearly. We currently have three part, we currently have two people in part-time positions. Right? And.
Assistant City Manager, if you, well, and I kind of stepped over Councilmember Jensen, but Councilwoman Jensen, you were asking about staffing at the library or also HHS?
Well, that, that's where I'm a little bit confused. And thank you for clarifying, Madam Mayor. I, I, I think, and what I heard was that the staffing wasn't going to change at the library. But, and I understand, I, I do understand how by eliminating the, the aspect of the contract with Village of Love, we will have the hot team doing the, doing the referrals, the case manager there. But what I'm still a little bit confused about is where the, the new MSW position will be filling and whether, and, and also, I should also say, it, it sounds like from comments from the public and from the librarian and from others, that the library is kind of a place where, as well as the hot team, which we're, which we need to cover. But the library is a place where we, we were planning to focus, according to the presentation.
Yeah, oh, good.
Who wants to go first?
No, I was just going to say, I just want to, so I think because we had that social, the reason we had the social worker in the second year was to try to space out some of our expenses and not have that in the first year. It doesn't mean we don't think there is a need right now. It's just that we were trying to be budget conscious and, and not bring in the new social worker until the second year, just to kind of have less of an impact on the bottom line. So in that first year, we're still continuing the current level of services in the baseline, which is the 12 hours in the library, which doesn't mean there isn't a need. It just means we were trying to kind of bring that in that second year in the budget. And so the social worker then comes in, the full-time social worker comes in the second year, those 12 hours that were being done by the part-time kind of shift back over to HHS to be used more citywide for other case management in the city.
Can I just jump in and say, I'm all for budget saving, you know me. But if the crisis exists now, how can we be saying, let's wait a year and then we'll give you what you're asking for? So whether, yeah, that's, I, I am confused by that too. Because I believe we have established that 12 hours of part-time casework a month just isn't enough. So why would we say, let's do it some more? And that's what I'm trying to see, can we utilize some of the resources from HHS? There's, you know, people now with those skills. How can we do that rather than just leave the library just with a, one part-time caseworker? And then I do want to go back to Councilmember Jensen, but.
Well, I mean, we could also, I mean, I don't think this, I don't know this is what you're saying, but we could move that request up and put it in the first year. And we could start it in the first year and have the social worker start in that first year. I don't know that's what you're saying, but that's also a possibility.
The council's going to discuss tonight. Let's go back to you.
Yeah, yeah, but that would be one way to solve that problem.
Got it. Thank you.
So, so just to be clear, the, this, the MSW, which is a position that we have not had, we've had case managers full-time as well as the current part-time.
And just, so there's a difference between an MSW, which is a student, and a social worker? And.
Oh, I, I'm sorry.
Too many initials and acronyms.
Okay, I'll say social worker.
I know what you meant.
And, and to, you know, just so, to be clear, I came from a program in Oakland that I managed for, for a number of years. And our shrub, our shrub chairperson, Scott Means, worked there as well and managed about 15 MSWs and licensed clinical social workers to do outreach for, this was for seniors, but we also had homeless programs as well. And I know Ms. Falls was aware of that and familiar with it. And, and so those positions, I say MSW, but a social worker position in, at least in my experience, could be, could be stationed or, or sited at a, a site and still have the ability to go out and, and provide services at other places. And of course, as we know, Alameda isn't, isn't that large of a, of a city. So I, I am in agreement and supportive of the accomplishments. I appreciate that laid out here that we have had the, the case manager in the library and that that seems to be, from what I understand in the presentation and from, from others, is that that's a, a service that is not be, that we need more of. That service is, is in demand. And so what I, and, and, but as well, I also understand that as we bring in the, the Village of Love homeless outreach contract, we will need to have a, a, a staff person there to do all of those services, which will take a FTE, correct? So, but meanwhile, we have these part-time kind of floaters who are not social workers, who are case managers. So I, I just would like to see this, as you've heard all these questions, I would like to see coverage at the library and hot, for the hot team as well. And to ensure that we are meeting the needs, I, I understand that we have been reducing the, well, I don't want to say reducing, but we've been meeting the needs of, of, by addressing encampment issues and, and other issues. So if we can just kind of figure out how to have the position, a social worker position at the library and to cover the hot team, which we're bringing in. And then as, ensuring that these caseworkers are supported and have a, and given direction to what they're fulfilling the gaps, I guess. So I hope that was clear. Sorry for kind of stumbling through that.
And I'd like to just piggyback on what you just said, Councilmember Jensen. As you were speaking, it occurred to me that we, we have a licensed, a licensed social worker in Ms. Falls, correct?
As well as Camille Rodriguez.
Or Camille Rodriguez?
No, we have, we don't have a li, any licensed clinicians on, on city staff. We have a Masters of Social Work in Camille Rodriguez.
Okay, and MSW, okay. So what I was trying to think is, and I know we've had discussions about possibly using someone from Alameda Family Services to do, bless you, to do the, the supervision. And I wonder if there was a way that there could be a time when a social worker is present in the library and another time when a licensed clinician from Alameda Family Services is present supervising MSWs to just kind of spread the coverage at the library? And then where we might not be able to have someone every hour, at least the ability to call for someone, a caseworker, to come out from HHS if the part-time caseworker isn't there. I mean, that's what I, you know, just trying to think creatively to have coverage, but to have it in this fiscal year.
Is there a need, is there a reason that the person who is a, one of these MSWs must be at City Hall West? I mean, could we not locate this position since they'll be reporting to HHS? Couldn't they be located?
That is what I'm talking about, located at the library. But the catch is, they, as I understand it, Assistant City Manager's done more research, they have to be supervised on-site by a licensed clinician. So then you got to get someone over, meaning you've got to pay someone to be there. And, but we have a good relationship with AFS and we certainly, you know, they have a number of contracts with us. It's just something to explore. It will cost money, so that's something under consideration too. Which of you, let's let, let's, Assistant City Manager?
The social worker in year one, so first of all, I, I hear a lot of questioning about collaboration, right, and, and cross-services. That already exists and will continue to exist because it all functions under HHS with some of the time at the library, right? So bringing on the social worker in year one, they certain, they and the in-house hot team certainly could and will respond to the library as needed. The goal is to also have hours at the library with people asking general social services questions, like I, I mentioned, or doing individualized case management with individuals who frequent the library, trying to have enough capacity to do that. And we feel like we can, we can certainly support, continue to support the library with the existing 12 hours a week in the first year. And then we can assess at, you know, mid-cycle and then with bringing in additional help and support with a full-time social worker at the library. But those will work seamlessly. The hot team will respond out, the social workers respond out. In terms of the social worker having, if, for example, if we only had one social worker that's HHS with the in-house hot team and I, if I understood correctly, Councilmember Jensen heard a suggestion for them to be located at the library. I hear that, but the goal is really that there are a lot out in the field also. So it's, it's, there's two different purposes here, right?
A social worker is in the field?
They would support out in the field, yes. And there's, there's, there's two purposes. One is for street outreach and encampments and one is for support for people who are at the library.
And Mayor, just can I jump in? I guess what I'm hearing too is that there is a desire to have enhanced social work presence in the library from what we have currently, which is a 12-hour. So we, I guess we can try to develop a budget for that of some sort of, in that first year, some sort of kind of part-time budget or contract budget that would allow us to expand social services in the library that first year? Is that something, I mean, I see some on the heads, is that what, because we could also try to do that in that first year? And that would include potentially looking at models? Because we need to do a little more research on the career pathway for the MSW, but look at models of ways we could do that, maybe with a contract with AFS, maybe part-time. But we could look at ways that we could in that first year expand and enhance the social worker that first year? And, and also look at this MSW kind of monitoring.
Sure. Can, can the Vice Mayor interject a question here? And we'll go back to you, Councilwoman Jensen. Is that okay? Or do you want to go next?
No, no, it's fine.
Vice Mayor? And then I am not ignoring the gentleman on my right. I just, I had Dez turn both ways. Soon, soon.
Yeah, it, it was, it was quick. So, so the way the library is covered now is 12 hours. And then the proposal was that there would be somebody, a staff at the library for 40 hours. So for, the discussion is, could we, I'm not, we don't necessarily have to go from 12 to 40. I mean, 30 would be, still be a giant improvement, I, I would imagine. So could we also kind of raise it, raise the hours now and then stagger it to 40?
Yeah, I think what we could talk about is looking at a way to either through contract or part-time staff, try to figure out a way to augment the presence and hours in the library in that first year. And, and also explore a way that we might do that. And again, and we don't want to commit to it because we, there are some, having the MSW, we like the idea, we just need to figure out the logistics of how that works with a licensed personnel staff. But maybe we could explore some, either BSWs, which is Bachelor in Social Work, or an MSW, some sort of career pathways with, with that as part of this first-year enhancement. Does that sound?
That sounds good. And, and you know, I, I feel, I apologize because I am getting into the operational weeds and I, I hate it when I do that and I don't mean to do that. But I, I do have a little, just my questions here about, about adding these positions and then, but still not providing sufficient coverage at the library. So let me just finish by asking, I, I mean, I, I appreciate the recommendation, approve integrated social service budget request and propose social service program for efficiency and cohesion. And that's really, I think, what we're all trying to move towards. And so your comments, City Manager, that would be the direction I'd like to move without any additional budget. Because as I've heard the presentation, as I've talked to you and, and heard from the library director as well, you know, when we bring the hot team in, what, what I heard earlier was that these are phone calls, that they're responding to calls and they're responding. So what I'm just asking with this cohesion and social services efficiency, could we not just, just have more of a presence used? And, and one thing I, I should also say is I appreciate that, that you're having everyone in this, all of these social workers as well as the case managers, everyone is reporting in, in the Health and Human Services organization. I think that's terrific. I'm glad that you're not dividing it or having a, a social worker at the library reporting to somewhere else. So since they're all reporting to HHS, would it be possible, as you mentioned, to, to move in that direction to have a, a, a library presence, more of a presence and they can do the tasks that they do for the hot team or for HHS or to support other programs?
I just want to clarify, Councilmember Jensen.
Assistant City Manager, yes.
Thank you. What I think I heard you say is that you're looking for more coverage of the library without any additional budget add. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay, well, the current mobile homeless outreach, both as contract and as we bring it in-house, really is all in and out in the field position. Those people are out all day responding to calls and doing case management, not to the extent right now that we'd like to, but doing, you know, meeting with people multiple times, taking them to appointments, doing that case management. So there's very limited time, they would, additional time they would have of downtime to be, to staff additional hours at the library without additional bodies.
I think I heard Councilwoman Jensen ask about the calls. Did, did you not tell us that the hot team respond to calls? Or do they do that from the van?
Sorry. I was giving, providing a data point that through the homeless hotline, we receive an average of 47 calls a month. There's also, I'll call the hot team out to places. The library would call, call them. directly. I mean, there's other ways also that they get called out. So there is that inner collaboration that's already occurring.
I text you sometimes.
I know.
Mayor, may I just, I want to make a suggestion.
Yes, City Manager, please.
I mean, I guess, I, I agree with Assistant City Manager Volter. I don't, I don't know that we can fit more service into the existing budget, but what I, what I might suggest is, would the council be willing, maybe we put on hold the social worker in the second year, we come back at mid-cycle, but we allocate a little more budget in this first year to see if we can establish some sort of program or just start to make some progress in the library sooner in the first year.
More coverage.
And, yeah, more coverage in the library. So it is an enhanced budget request for that first year, but we take out the request in the second year and then let us see if we can figure out a career pathway with MSWs, if we can figure out another contract. Maybe we come back to you in mid-cycle and ask for the social worker again. I'm not, I can't guarantee, but let us do a little work in this first year to figure out a program and then come back at mid-cycle with a kind of, hey, should we continue what we're already doing with a contract? Or maybe we'll come back to you and make a justification again for a permanent full-time position, but at least we'll have started something in that first year.
And what I, back to Councilmember Jensen, then I really want to hear from you, our colleagues.
That's a great, that's a great idea. And I think that would give you the ability to collect the data, to see how it's working and to, and also since the hot team is coming in and we don't have that, we, we understand what the contractor's been doing and they've been meeting hopefully their targets or not, but, but since it's coming in-house, that's going to have a whole new, it will have new data and we'll have new idea about how that person or that, that position can be deployed.
And I'm looking, I don't, I was speaking, so I want to make sure.
I'm not going to talk.
No, no, Assistant City Manager was a, yep, okay.
Absolutely, that's a direction we could go.
Okay. Okay, no, I, I'm going to call on Councilmember Volter next.
Okay. Thank you. So as I understand it, adding these two positions, the original staff recommendation here is a cost savings.
That's correct.
About $77,000.
That's correct.
And there is also a city staff sense that the efficacy of the Village of Love program can be enhanced by bringing it in-house.
That's correct. We feel we can do more individualized case management because our, some existing current staff on higher levels have been doing that work, some of it.
And we also think that if we have a licensed MSW as part of our HSS staff, we can have a multiplier effect and, and actually use interns, MSW interns that can earn hours.
I'm not proposing that. We, a licensed clinical social worker, LCSW, is different than a Masters of Social Work. So right now, our pay scale that we've proposed is not at the licensed clinical level. I've been talking to, to Alameda Family Services and exploring what it, what, if, if we could and what it would look like to have that career pathway of utilizing MSW or BSW interns for these part-time positions that we have and, and will continue to have in our baseline. But we haven't finalized what that will look like yet and what the options are for that.
I'm sorry, what's the position that you're not proposing at this time? A licensed, you're not proposing?
None of this proposal includes a licensed clinical social worker, LCSW.
May I just jump in?
Please.
But it would be something we could explore to see whether or not we could do. We just, we just don't want to guarantee we can do it yet because we, there are, it is a little complex. We want to research a little bit and we've already started researching it, but we just don't want to tell you right now we can make that work 100%. But we, we want to try to see whether or not there's a career pathway, we, we could structure this. So we just need a little more time to see if we could make that work.
It's fair to say that piece is independent of all the various ideas that are, that's an independent thing.
Yes.
Village of Love, so let's assume that we pull the hot team services in-house as the staff recommendation is. How does that sit with Village of Love? Are all their shelters and all their services they're providing for us, they're, they're fine continuing those? They're, they're okay if we are not using a hot team anymore?
The hot team is their smallest contract with us and we, we've talked with them about it, we've been upfront with them about it and, and, and they will absolutely continue to honor, to do the other contracts for day center, emergency supportive housing, and they're fine with that.
Is their performance of their contract at issue at all in, in this proposal in terms of, did the city look at their performance and decide as part of this that that's, that's an additional reason to pull it in-house?
No, overall, they have performed well. As I mentioned, they helped us clear Main Street encampment, which was huge and they were a critical component of that. We just see a better cohesive, integrated program by bringing in in-house because our existing staff are already doing so much work of that case management. We feel that we can be more effective with what our managers are doing versus what a social worker and case managers would be doing and just more effective and cohesive if it's in-house.
And I believe at the last budget workshop, we had a conversation with Alameda Family Services a little bit as related to the library. Did staff look at the possibility of instead of bringing it in-house, the city of using AFS, a, a position that's contracted through AFS at the library?
I have talked with them about it and they're open to the concept of doing contractor work at the library. I would not recommend that, I guess, let me say it another way. I would recommend that the social worker position and what we're trying to do with bringing hot in-house, that's focused on homelessness. And AFS is, their, their mission is mental health services. So, so that's a different focus. However, they do work with people who are homeless and so they do feel comfortable exploring the option with us to have contract, to contract with AFS to provide social services and social worker positions at the library.
Can I just jump in for clarification? Because we have a contract with Alameda Family Services to work with our care team to sometimes go out on calls, but in any event, to always be in contact by phone and then to follow up the next day and a week and two weeks later and all that. And sometimes those are cases involving unsheltered individuals, so.
They absolutely, that's what I'm saying, is their, their core mission is, is mental health and that includes work if people are homeless.
As you explained earlier, yes.
Which is what they do with care teams sometimes, individuals. We work with them and Village of Love, their homeless outreach team works seamlessly with Alameda Family Services, Building Futures, all of us work very, very closely together. We meet bi-weekly, we have meetings of four or five different service providers in the city to talk about individual case, cases. And so we're working very seamlessly together. I'm just saying that AFS, I think, is a, is, is an absolute viable option that we could explore to contract with them to provide the social services at the library. The, I'm saying is, the, the social worker position to bring the homeless outreach team in-house isn't as much in their direct line of service because it's only focused on homelessness.
And those are two separate positions. So you could still pull in the one position, the hot services in-house and you could also separately contract for the library. But obviously in this recommendation, staff chose to recommend both positions being with the city. So if that remains the recommendation, is there any way to articulate why not use AFS? Does it create more cohesion, more integration? Does it, those types of issues?
You know, honestly, I think it could work with AFS at the library. Really, we're looking to provide the coverage and the skillset. And so in-house or contracting with AFS could both provide that at the library. We were looking at the, the full-time position, trying to articulate, I mean, really because of the, trying to do that cohesion, like you said. I mean, as soon as you start adding in-service providers, it's one more level of communication and things like that that you need to manage. But I, I think, you know, that's why to City Manager Ott's point, we're absolutely fine pausing on the library social worker position now so that we can analyze and bring back to council these options of contract and in-house and bring that back at mid-cycle because since, and in the meantime, we could provide some additional part-time dollars for more part-time support at, either contract or part-time at the library.
Like, I could, I could imagine one response to that question being, well, it's a better fit for it to have the service be in-house because even though, you know, it's, it's case managed, it's social work that AFS can do, because there's an overlap with some of the patrons of the library have housing issues, some are homeless, it's a better fit for HSS than it is for AFS. But do you feel that way or no?
Yeah, and I might, yes, and I might bring up Ms. Falls to, to respond as well. She was the original brainchild of all of this. But the services at the library, it's, it's more of a mix. The, the, the hot team in-house really is focused on homelessness, but the services at the library will be a mix of homelessness, individualized case management and broader social services. So I do think there's still a lot to be said for the cohesion of it being a full-time position with this, in the city and part of staff. And I think there's opportunities.
And I'd like to just follow up on something that my colleague asked about with contracting with AFS. And I, I know you said that be one more level of communication to deal with, but of course, we deal with AFS on a regular basis and with, I think, very good results. But also if we had that AFS person, say we were to contact, contract with a licensed clinician, that could also be the avenue to oversee MSW candidates doing casework in the library, just something to, to think about. But, and I'm sorry, what, we're looking for more detail on, what is it, from Ms. Falls?
I just wanted to see if Ms. Falls could provide additional context on the, the difference of, of in-house social worker at the library and contracting at the library.
Good evening. You want to go ahead and introduce yourself?
Good evening, Council. I'm Simone Falls, Manager of Housing and Human Services Division. I agree that AFS could potentially be a good fit as a social worker at the library. I think the consideration would be where that person would sit, just like with an in-house licensed social worker. So the reason why that person would sit with HHS is because we manage and have expertise in social services to be able to provide appropriate supervision and guidance for the person at the library. So potentially either way, they would need to sit under HHS. I do trust the work that AFS does. I think they would do a great job. The other consideration would be additional staff time to manage another contract and to add on that coordination with AFS. But I do think both pathways are pathways that could be fruitful.
And can I just ask for clarification? When you said a question of where they would sit, is that metaphorically?
Yes, yes.
That's not physically soothing with HHS.
You know how little I am?
I think we all want to clarify the same thing, yes.
Was that what everyone was, what chair would that look like?
Yeah, so.
Organizational chart.
Exactly. They would report to, if, if it was an AFS contract, they would still report to Housing and Human Services staff.
This is why I love pictures.
But they would be located at the library.
And Mayor, could I just?
Please.
Okay. I just, I had an idea listening to everyone too, is that we do have a saving, I mean, one idea from a budget standpoint, we do have a savings of the 77,000. We could use that savings, essentially make it revenue neutral, to use that for that year one, to do some sort of contract part-time assignment. If you give us a little bit of that latitude to try to figure that out over the next year and come up with some proposal, but using that cost savings and then come back to you at mid-cycle and say, hey, this is working or not working and, or maybe we want to ask for the permanent position, but then we, we essentially make this a kind of revenue neutral and we use that same budget to, to figure out a way to provide service to the library faster.
Well, and the operative word being faster, so we, we don't have to wait until mid-cycle. You would come up with something, I mean, with enough time to do a, you know, fully-formed plan, but in the, the near future, because the need is yesterday.
Yeah, and if you kind of trust us to kind of try to figure it out, it would either be a contract with AFS or it'd be part-time, we try to do something soon. And then we, we usually come back, I think, in the fall for the road home update.
Yeah, it'll be in later fall.
So maybe we could give you an update at that point. There, we usually do an annual update on our homeless program and so maybe at that update, we could give you an update on how, what we've been able to figure out, what we're doing. We're going to try to figure out a way to do this career pathways. And then what we, we would essentially, out of this budget, take out the social worker in the second year, but your direction would be to revisit that at mid-cycle and either figure out, and we would have an updated recommendation. Either we, hey, we've established a great program through contract services or part-time, we recommend sticking with it, or we recommend, hey, it's still a little clunky, we need some help and so maybe we might come back to you in the second year and ask you to, for that permanent position. We don't know, but if you let us try to use essentially that budget savings to try to figure out a, a way to get services to the library faster.
I think I speak for the council when I say we trust you. But let me, just from my clarification, are you saying it would be waiting until fall before we added coverage?
No, no, no. We would try to do it as fast, I mean, we, we would want to be thoughtful, right?
Understood, yes.
So we might not be immediately, but we would do it quickly. All I was just saying is that we could then update the council on what we've been doing and the progress we made. Hopefully, we've started it and gotten it going.
Of course.
But we could give you an update, were we able to figure out an MSW program or not or, and so we'd be able to give you kind of an update on where we are. That we would have a public discussion about kind of the progress we've made. But we're going to try, we would try to set it up faster.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Falls.
I just want to make sure because you're.
I agree with City Manager Ott.
Okay, cool. Back to Councilmember Volter.
Thank you. So for the immediate need, as part of the, the thought, I know that the City Manager talked about budget, but there's also the proposal, of course, for the security guard. And I know that doesn't take care of all the social services aspects, but as far as some of the immediate needs of the library, is the thought that, because that would come on in the first year, that that would be part of that?
Yes, that's currently in the, that remains in the staff proposal, proposal to have security guards the first year, starting the first year.
Is there, is it, has staff given thoughts to the, to the notion that maybe once the social workers are online, that the security guard might not be necessary anymore?
It's possible. We would, I mean, we would continue to evaluate, absolutely.
And just, could I, that is a contract, so it's very easy to terminate a contract like that. So let's say we start this new program and we're, it feels redundant or we don't really think we need the security guard or there's creating, I think one of the concerns, some of the, you know, does this create a kind of overly, kind of policed kind of environment in the library? I mean, if, if we're getting that sense and we, we maybe could come back and recommend that we eliminate it or, but right now, I think we, based on our survey of all of the libraries in the county, they're, almost all of them are providing security services. Sometimes they're doing other things and we can try to look at that, but, but I think we'd like to keep that in the budget and then, but we can always revisit. And it's a professional services contract, so we can terminate it if we, if, if we, if it's not working.
And along those lines of the security guard, I was at a meeting yesterday and the San Leandro Mayor, Juan Gonzalez, was there. So I pulled him aside and said, hey, do you have security guards in your library? Do you have social workers in your library? No on the social workers, yes on the security guards. He thought that they also performed another function. I didn't have a chance to follow up with him on what that might be, but, you know, when you're looking into, into that thing, that topic, perhaps you and City Manager could look into that too. Back to you, Councilmember Volter. Anything further?
I don't think I have anything else. Thank you.
Councilmember Desong.
On this topic, no, I don't have much comments or questions. I do appreciate the presentation. Thank you both of you very much. I appreciate it, it's very informative.
Okay, that was all for you, Councilmember. Okay, and back to Councilmember Jensen.
Well, are we going to talk about the other proposals? Because Councilmember Volter brought the security guard up and I do have some questions.
Oh, yeah, I was staying in the library, but that's the library, yep.
So I'm actually not really supportive of the security guard and I'll, I'll explain why, for some of the reasons that you mentioned, City Manager Ott, that security guards can be seen sometimes as potentially confrontational. And I also would like to take this opportunity to ask the city attorney about liability for a contract for security guards. I know there's been cases in other cities that I'm familiar with where cities have faced actions because of security guard.
Please, City Attorney Eben Chen.
Yes, Councilmember, I mean, with respect to all employees, I mean, if employees engage in misconduct, whoever they are, the city is liable.
There's to be a contract though, not an employee.
And same with a contract. I mean, we certainly have less liability in a contract, assuming that there's indemnification and there is insurance requirements that protect the city, the liability is reduced. But, you know, nothing is liability-free and that's why the city also carries its own insurance that adds a layer of protection to the city and we work very hard to defend the city against these liabilities.
Thank you. Certainly, the, the safety of staff is, is the, the major goal here. And I, I just am a little bit, a, a little bit less supportive of a security guard because it, I, I don't want to, well, I, I would prefer not to move in that direction, starting with the libraries and eventually somehow I would not want to have, to have security guards at all of our public buildings. I feel it's really important for everyone to have access and, and unfortunately, security guards can sometimes make the people who are using our library for refuge feel uncomfortable. And so that's my main concern about the, having security guards at the library and I appreciate also. I appreciate also the potential for having more case management and secure, or social work at the libraries to maybe reduce some of the need for a security guard. And I also have done a little bit of research, and I understand that, I think there is a request for additional library staff, and there are, there are new trainings and new duties, new responsibilities of librarians, unfortunately, in the era, in the environment that we're in, that we have, some places actually engage and hire librarians that are well-trained and support security, become the security librarian. Thank you.
So I'm going to weigh in with the opposite view. I am very mindful of the concerns that I've heard from our library director, from library staff, and I, I think, as Councilmember Bowler inquired, that there may come a time when there is less need, or maybe just to have a security guard come at closing time to escort staff out if it's nighttime, although I think we're reducing nighttime hours, but I think we're not there yet. And also, I will say, there are security guards, and there are security guards, and I think that whoever is interviewing and, you know, managing that contract will make it clear that this is a facility where, you know, children, patrons of all ages, and, you know, different needs, and sometimes, you know, it requires a sensitivity. And again, as the City Manager noted, these are at-will employees, contract employees. If it doesn't work out, it doesn't work out. But I think I would urge that we err on the side of caution, you know, start and make sure we have that safety net. I appreciate that City Manager, Assistant City Manager, Ms. Falls and her department are going to work to have the coverage that you deem necessary and sooner rather than later. If there's a time when we cut the contract or cut it back, but I know the City Manager, who used to be Assistant City Manager in the city of Hayward, checked with their library director. Hayward has a big, beautiful library, and it's a bigger city than we are, but they do have security guards in all their libraries, including their branches. I believe this request is just for the main library, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. This is for the main library, and I wanted to add, if I may, Mayor.
Please, please.
Director Einer confirmed that the San Leandro has security guards who are city staff, and so that may be why their mayor was indicating they might do other duties as well.
Yeah, that's intriguing. Do we know what other duties, or you can work that out?
I don't have that, I can do it now.
All right. Could they be reference librarians to, just a thought. Anyway, I am, Vice Mayor Pryor.
I tend to be more in agreement with what Councilmember Jensen said. However, you know, there might be specific needs that we're not aware of, so I'm going to be very open-minded about that. And then, on the other hand, if this is something that does, that we do move forward with, that there is a security guard, I would like to have data, so we can see, like, is there a reduction of incidents, or is it really everything's the same, but people just feel better, you know, which is great. Anyway, so that's why I just want something more tangible, or that we can refer to.
And I agree with the data. I like data about all of this. The results from case workers, social workers, MSWs, City Manager Otte.
I was just going to say is that, since we're coming back at mid-cycle to kind of reevaluate what we do in that second year, we could provide an update on the security guard and the incidents, and try to, you know, and give you an update on the data that we've collected as part of whatever our recommendation is at that time.
That'd be great. That sounds good. Do you all have enough input from us to, and Jensen, forgot that?
I think we have directions, so that's great. Do you want us to finish, just to wrap up the whole budget a little bit?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I just ask you on this library issue.
Yes, on this topic, yep.
Okay, we'll put the library to bed.
And we saw this is kind of the most un, kind of clear, or wasn't quite clear, so this is great. I think we have very clear direction now.
I think, and that way, when Finance Director McCarthy comes, it's just going to be a walk in the park. So come on up and walk us through the park if you would. Welcome, and introduce yourself, please.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Ashcraft and City Councilmembers. My name is Ross McCarthy, Finance Director.
And that's a congratulations, because that's as of last week. Yay!
Thank you.
All right.
Tonight, I just wanted to take a few minutes of your time to continue our conversation about the proposed biennial budget. When we left off last Monday, our proposed funding gap to be covered by residual fund balance was at $6.5 million for fiscal year '26 and $2.9 million for fiscal year '27. This would put us at an expected residual fund balance at the end of fiscal year '27 of $9.5 million. In response to City Council's guidance, staff is recommending increasing the proposed police officer count from 70 to 72 for a combined two-year cost of roughly $1.1 million. Staff is also recommending the addition of a full-time victim service advocate for a cost just north of $400,000 over the two-year cycle. Staff is also recommending allocating safety costs to community facilities districts where feasible. We believe doing so will net the general fund $1 million per year.
Mayor, can I just, I just want to give, Councilmember.
You want to repeat that?
Yeah, yes, I want to say it three times.
$1 million a year, yeah.
But I do just, we've turned over a lot of rocks in putting our proposed budget, but I just want to commend Councilmember Desog for turning over another very big rock that we were able to find, so just want to say thank you.
Yes, good work. Yes, thank you. Please, continue.
Okay. As Assistant Manager Woolridge noted earlier, staff is recommending approval of a Program Specialist II for Housing and Human Services, starting in year one, and a social worker at the library, starting in year two, but those will be amended. Staff will, staff will continue to monitor revenues carefully and will report back to City Council during the mid-year and mid-cycle budgets, if anticipated ongoing revenues surpass our current estimates. Here you will see a summation of proposals that have changed since our budget workshop last Monday. We are proposing use of roughly $400,000 more in fund balance over the two-year cycle, and plan to end fiscal year '27 with a residual fund balance of $9.1 million. To wrap things up, staff is recommending the use of $6.8 million in residual fund balance to cover fiscal year '26 and $3 million for fiscal year '27. Just to reiterate, staff projects the ending fund balance at that time above the City Council required 25% to be $9.1 million. Thanks so much. We have staff available for any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Any clarifying questions from council before you go to public comment?
Yes, clarifying question.
Councilmember Desog.
So, you know, I was looking throughout the presentations and in the staff reports to see what each departmental top-line numbers are, because I am pretty sure in previous budgets, we always know what the, each department's and their respective budgets are. So for example, the budget that we approved for the police for '24, '25, year ending '25 this June, was $48.7 million. So my question then is, what is the total number that we have for the general fund number that we're going to authorize for the police?
Thanks, Councilmember. I think that came with the June, with the June city, with the June budget proposal, the final budget proposal that you saw in June. I believe, I think I sent the numbers to.
In June?
I'm sorry.
It's Russell May.
Sorry, in fiscal year '25, excuse me. So when we were doing the projected budget, I'm not sure that it was in the staff report for the budget workshop. I could be, I could be wrong, though. But I did, sorry, I sent the number earlier to Chief Nishant, and I will get to it.
You weren't, you're talking about the total budget. You're talking about the total police budget.
It was roughly $48.5 million, but let me look through my emails, and then I'll get back to you.
That'd be great. Okay. Do you have another question, or Councilmember Desog, or you want to wait on that one?
$48.5 million.
Or we, you want us to go to public?
I guess, I do have, I do have one.
I think we have the chief. Come on up and introduce yourself, sir.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of City Council, Nishant Joshi, Police Chief for APD. I just want to help answer that question, this question we were looking at when we met last week. So our baseline budget, excluding COLAs, MOU, et cetera, and also excluding the current proposals, is $49.9 million in fiscal year '26.
Okay, and is that all general fund, $49.9?
I believe so, yes. That's correct.
Okay. All right. So let me just clarify. So the $48.7 million in fiscal year '24, '25 got us a total of 125 authorized positions, of which 88 were sworn officers, of which 65 were officers who would be on the street. So the budget of $49 million will get us, I'm not sure what the total non-s sworn plus sworn is, but will get us 74, or 72, 72 officers, 72 sworn officers, of which 51 will be officers on the street. And those will be positions, authorized positions.
Yes, that's correct, and I can give you the, our exact authorized positions, if you give me one second. Sorry, I apologize.
It says 125 in the staff report, but I'm not sure that's correct. I mean, maybe it is.
I'm almost there. Sorry, I'm going through several files.
That's okay, whoever gets to it first.
Okay, yes, so it's, the full-time positions, it's the total I have, it just closed, sorry.
It matches my freezing iPad. It's, I totally get it.
I know we have IT here.
Yes, IT in the house.
Okay, so, yes, it's 88 total sworn, and then 36 for professional staff, and that's a total of 124.
So that would be 36 plus 74.
Right, but we also have our, that's correct, yes.
Okay. Okay. One twenty. Okay, all right. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, Chief. Councilmember Desog.
Yeah, one more question. So, not, not for the chief, it's a finance question. So for the $1 million that will be, we will be taking out of Municipal Services District, is it Bayport alone, or is it both of the Alameda Landings, or all three? And related question, will there still be remaining?
And City Manager, as you go to answer that, for the general public who might not have tuned in last time, can you just give a little explanation of what this instrument is?
Yeah, sure. It's, so when we've started, when we started redeveloping some of the former Navy property, there was a desire by the City Council at the time to have a kind of what's called a fiscal neutrality policy. So there were fiscal analyses that were done, and so when we redeveloped Alameda Landing, Bayport, and Alameda Point, they have, we formed Community Facilities District for services. You can also form them for infrastructure and pay for infrastructure, and we've done that at Alameda Marina, for instance. In this case, we were using the Community Facilities District to pay for municipal services, and those were essentially to offset the impacts to the general fund of creating new development. And so we have a Community Facilities District for Bayport, we have one for Alameda Landing, and we have one for Alameda Point. For the recommendation here in this budget, it's just Bayport and Alameda Landing that had a fund balance that, based on our estimates of patrol and the officers that are assigned to those areas, we believe we can justify the transfer of some of that fund balance to the general fund to offset those municipal services. We need to look more carefully at Alameda Point, the way, because it was done a little differently. We've got a lot of new parks and roads and other things, so I think we'd prefer not to, we can look at it, it can be one of those things that we're looking at over the next year to kind of explore, but we want to be really careful about that, because we're using that to pay for a lot of other stuff out at the base. So this would just be for the Bayport and Alameda Landing CFDs.
Thank you.
Great explanation, too. Thank you very much. Other clarifying questions? Did, and actually, is this, we've done public comment, is that correct, or?
Well, the speaker didn't come up on, we have two speakers on pickleball, so I don't know, in the ARPD budget, so I don't know if you want to encapsulate that.
Or is it, or is that a CIP? I don't know, when you want to call it. Well, we do talk about parks in the, but, I mean, as City Attorney Shin.
Madam Mayor, when the, when staff completes their presentation, the public does have the right to comment on the completed presentation, so.
No, I understand that. We just weren't sure whether it was this one or the next staff report.
Oh, right. I think the city clerk can just inquire.
I mean, I think they're both pickleball, but do you guys, do you want to speak on the CIP projects, the capital improvement projects?
I think if we were to add new pickleball courts, it would be, it would be a capital project, and that would be my suggestion, but.
And we're coming soon to that, very soon. Okay, all right. Okay, any other public comment on this item? Okay, okay. So, okay, council, anything, any further direction to staff, or just, you know, go do great things and come back, or? Councilmember Jensen?
I have a question for the chief.
Chief Joshi. We have more than one chief in the room.
Oh. For the police chief, Alameda Police. Good evening, Chief Joshi. I was able to attend this morning the ceremony to swear in four new officers, and so with that, I would just like to get the baseline for where we are now with the swearing in of those officers, and I understand they're, they're entering field training, and then we have, can you tell me if we have other officers that are not yet driving, I guess that's what you say, they're not yet solo, yeah? And the other officers that we have that are either in transition or in the academy, so where we are, where we'll be when this budget starts, thanks.
Sure. As of this morning, after the swearing in, our total officer number is at 46. We expect to lose one in retirement the first week of June. We do have another officer who is in the process with another police department, so we can assume that that person will probably gone sometime mid-June as well. So our numbers in June will probably drop down to 44. The second week of July, we'll be hiring, if all things go, all things go as planned, we will be hiring three new officers. The benefit of them is that one is a lateral, and two have completed police academies. So that'll put us at, let's see, 46, 44, plus three, that puts us at 47. We have two police officer trainees that are in the academy, so that's, that's what we have in the pipeline, and then we have three additional who are in the process, they haven't, they have to complete a lot more work before we even consider hiring them. Now, as to how many people are in the field training process, so they're sworn police officers, but they're riding with a training officer. We have one, since the last time we spoke, we had, I'm sorry, the last time we spoke, I was here, we had two in field training. One of those two has successfully completed field training, and he's now a solo police officer. We are hoping that we get the remaining one to complete additional training, hopefully within the next month or so. The four that just got sworn in this morning, they are starting field training. They will not be cut loose or solo police officers for at least four to five months.
And so these numbers that we have in the presentation tonight, 70 and 72 are accurate for the start of this budget. I'm sorry, I wasn't speaking to my mic. Just to confirm, and this may be for the City Manager as well.
I think in order to get to the 49 that's allocated in the budget for the 72 officers, we need to wait till September 22nd to get the two out of the academy. That's my, and that would be up to the 49 officers, plus 23 others sworn, excluding the chief, and then we get to the 72 number.
And that's provided everyone makes it through.
That's right, yeah.
That's correct.
Okay, and so then, and the budget reflects the, reflects the fact that we're not starting off, we have a month or two months of, without the officer salaries.
Yeah, so there'd be a little, a little cost savings, but.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, are we good? All right, thank you. Thank you so much, staff, and thank you all.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, I have one more question.
Of course.
For the City Manager. Sorry, Chief, for the City Manager. And this, I say this, and I. And this, I say this, and I look at the City Attorney and hope that he doesn't, like, give me a dirty look or something, but I want to be clear that, in our budget, we also are going to be providing salary and benefit adjustments, we don't know what they are, and I'm not going to go there, but, for, not only for our police department, but for several other unions, so that's something that we, as we move forward and we approve this, that is reflected as well.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, so with that, I am going to close item three A, and we are going to move on to item three B. Madam Clerk, would you please introduce item three B while our Public Works Director and City Engineer, whomever, come on up, welcome.
Well, I have a question, so.
I've closed that item, but I might be magnanimous. Go ahead, Councilmember DeSoto.
Is there going to be a vote on three A, on the, ultimately what's adopted?
I mean, these are budget work sessions, I think we have majority direction to move forward with what was in the, and that we would then bring it back for, based on what we're showing here, plus the changes we talked about, we would bring that back for a vote on, I think we're looking at June third or June seventeenth, depending on how quickly we can get that out, yeah.
And the City Clerk wants to weigh in on this too, so let's hear her.
I would just say, in all past budget workshops, the Council has just provided direction without any motions.
Okay.
And we'll be voting in June.
Well, then, could I provide a comment then?
You may.
Okay.
Because I'm in a good mood tonight.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Otherwise, I don't know.
You know, I, first of all, let me say, I appreciate the fact that our Chief of Police and all of his lieutenants and captains, as well as all the men and women who are out in the field, I appreciate the fact that, that the staff is working in a fully, uh, hired manner. But I would say, though, that at forty-seven or forty-nine, we're still, we're really being stretched, spread thin, and that makes us that much more vulnerable to, you know, when someone gets injured, or, you know, if there are unexpected, or if there are people who retire. So, I do think, though, that the number that we really should be shooting for is sixty-five budget-authorized officers-on-the-street positions, and I want to emphasize the word positions, because sixty-five had always been the number year in, year out, since at least two thousand eleven. So, I looked up in the minutes, and it appears it was a decision that was made in two thousand eleven, and it went to sixty-five because the staff had to make some cuts, because in December of two thousand ten, the nation was obviously at its lowest trough in the Great Recession, and that had impacts on our police force. So, in June of two thousand eleven, the police force had to cut from ninety-two total sworn officers to the number you see today, eighty-eight, so they cut a number of four officers in that decision. So, what we have to recognize is that we are eliminating from eighty-eight budget-authorized positions to seventy-four, seventy-two budget-authorized positions, total sworn budget-authorized positions. You know, that represents possibly a twenty-two percent cut in positions. And I want to emphasize the word positions, because that's as opposed to workers. We're not cutting workers, but we're cutting authorized positions. And I get that for the past, you know, year and a half, our police, our chief has been able to work with forty-seven and forty-nine, but it is my view that, you know, given the public's concern about crime and safety, that we're spreading ourselves thin. And the second point I want to make about when we set the number at seventy-two total sworn officers or forty-nine officers-on-the-street positions, when we reset those numbers, we're basically creating a new baseline, and so, we're saying, you know, the number of sixty-five that we've always had authorized since two thousand eleven, that's out the door now, because the new number would be forty-nine. And, and you can't simply go, after we adopt the budget, you can't simply decide to go from forty-nine to fifty-one or fifty-three, because that would mean that you would have to take some budget authority from some other department. So, I think anytime you cut the police force by, police force positions by twenty-two percent, I think that requires a significant conversation that the public should have, separate from, from the, from the budget. So.
Thank you, Councilmember DeSoto, and I'm glad you raised the issue of back in two thousand ten when we were facing the Great Recession, because anyone who's following the news now has to be concerned about the situation our nation, our state, our city finds ourselves in now. We, I've been in Washington DC recently, where the folks I met with said, the worst is yet to come, we haven't hit bottom. At our Alameda County Transportation Commission Policy Committee meetings yesterday, our state lobbyist was on the screen, he joined us remotely from Sacramento, and the governor's May revise will come out this week, and he said, we're expecting a budget deficit in our state of anywhere between five and twenty-five billion, that's billion with a B, and that's going to impact our cities, so I don't disagree with anything you said, except that it is not in the least bit irresponsible for the Council to have acted the way we have. I think we're being very prudent in asking for those increased police positions, also asking for the victim advocate, who will help make sure that crime victims are assisted, and when we know more about what our financial situation will look like, and that might be mid-cycle, we can, we can do more when we, when we know more about what we have, but right now, you know, it's nice to be aspirational, but we have to be realistic too. And with that, we're going to go on to item three B, and come on back up, Public Works Director, thank you.
Budget workshop, fiscal years twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-six, seventy, twenty-seven, to provide direction on the capital improvement program budget.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the Council, I'm your Public Works Director, here to present the proposed capital budget for the upcoming two fiscal years. Joining me this evening is our City Engineer, as well as several project leads who'll be available to answer any questions that you may have. As you know, while the operating budget focuses on the day-to-day functions of the city, the capital budget is about the long-term, investing in infrastructure that supports our community for decades to come, including our roads, buildings, parks, sewers, storms, and other infrastructure. Simply put, the operating budget manages the present, and the capital budget builds the future. Tonight, I'll begin by highlighting some accomplishments from our, from our past two years, then I'll outline important considerations that shaped this year's capital, proposed capital budget. I'll walk you through specific investments proposed, and conclude by spotlighting major ongoing projects that have no new appropriations. Though you heard many accomplishments last week as part of the operating budget presentation, I'd like to highlight some of the capital investments made over the last two years. It was mentioned last week, but worth noting again, we completed a thirty-million-dollar infrastructure investment, bringing backbone infrastructure into Alameda Point's adaptive reuse area. We also replaced the roof at Building Twenty-four, paved six-point-nine miles of city streets, removed over fourteen thousand sidewalk tripping hazards, upgraded traffic signals to improve the usability by all users of intersections, rehabilitated six miles of sewer, automated water movement through the Harbor Bay Lagoon system to maximize water quality, made emergency repairs along the western shoreline of Bay Farm Island, following the intense storm we had this past December. Our Facilities Division has been busy as ever, replacing roofs at our Fleet Services Center, renovating restrooms at the O Club, replacing the roof at Tillman Park, upgrading the heating and electrical systems, making improvements to the Mastic Senior Center, and various improvements at the Veterans Memorial Building, including the refurbishment of wood floors, replacement of heaters, and renovations of bathrooms. A few accomplishments from parks includes the replacement of the Cruce Park Tennis Court, upgrade of the Washington Park LED, with LED lighting, new drinking fountains and bike racks at various parks, park signage and a new lawn at Bull Hole Immigrant Circle Park, and pathway repairs at Shoreline Chichenio and Cruce. Were nearly done with the installation of rapid-flashing beacons at key crossings along McCartney Ave, and made improvements at the Lincoln Walnut Intersection. And in an effort to build resiliency in the face of climate change, Council approved ten percent design concepts to protect the northern shoreline of Bay Farm Island and the city's northern shoreline near the Posey-Webster Tube from sea level rise and flooding. The capital budget is largely funded with revenues from restricted funds, however, there are general fund allocations in the proposed budget. As you heard at last week's budget workshop, general fund revenues are impacted by the current economic downturn, and the future is uncertain. This combined with the rapidly changing landscape of federal policy demanded careful review of general fund allocations to the budget. Projects were prioritized that enhance public safety, align with City Council's strategic plan, and maximize opportunities to leverage grant funding. I did want to point out at this point in the presentation that the proposed general fund allocations that I'll discuss later in detail on the slides are already assumed in the nine-point-one-million-dollar excess fund balance that Director McCarthy spoke of earlier this evening in the operating budget. So, the proposed, say one more time, just to make sure it's clear, the proposed allocations that we'll talk about tonight, that are general fund allocations in the capital budget, are already assumed or included in the budget Director McCarthy presented earlier this evening. The, for the remainder of the capital budget, fund balances, projected revenue, and operational costs within those funds were considered to understand available funding. Master plans and other policy documents, like the general plan, are referenced. Facility condition assessments are considered, and staffing resources to execute projects. In your packet tonight are thirty-nine proposed capital projects totaling eighty-six-point-two million over the two-year budgeting period. Each project sheet you have includes a description of the project, the proposed source of funding and allocation amount for each of the years in the two-year budget. As noted earlier, and shown here, the capital budget is largely funded with revenues from restricted funds. For example, the sewer fund is restricted to maintenance and upkeep of our city sewers. Transportation-related funds, which include Measure BB, the Alameda County Transportation Sales Tax, gas tax, and vehicle registration fee, to name a few, are restricted to investment in the city's roadway network. The Stormwater Fund to enhancements to the stormwater system, in efforts to keep stormwater pollution-free before it enters the bay. Alameda Point reinvests revenue from leases and building sales to operate existing and build new infrastructure at Alameda Point. Grants are obviously project-specific, and thanks to the good work of staff, represent close to a quarter of the funding in the capital budget. The general fund is the only funding source that's not restricted and can support any public infrastructure expense. We can also break down the eighty-six million investment by project category. As illustrated on the right half of the pie chart, nearly half the total investment is going into transportation-related projects. That includes maintenance of existing assets, like paving streets, street lighting and sidewalks, and transportation system enhancements, which include safety corridor projects, neighborhood greenways, safe routes to school, and other projects that enhance the safety and usability of the city's roadway network. A fifth of the capital investment is going into our aging sewer infrastructure, another eight percent into adaptation and stormwater, twenty-two percent in building facilities, and parks shown at the top, two percent. I did want to note that this figure is slightly misleading, in that many of the buildings being invested in under the building and facilities categories are recreation centers and other buildings that support parks. What we categorize as parks for this purpose are non-building amenities, such as fields, courts, playgrounds, and other park amenities. Given the economic climate, general fund investments were tightly focused. Out of the twenty-eight million requested, just eight million is recommended based on the priorities of enhancing public safety, aligning with strategic projects, and leveraging opportunities for grant funding. This table lists the projects with the proposed general fund allocation, the amount of that allocation, and whether it's specifically a named project in the city's strategic plan. Projects with an asterisk have additional funding, non-general-source funding, which I'll show on a later slide. Public Works is responsible for over seven thousand street light, park pathway, and public parking lot lights. The proposed capital investment shown here for this asset group is typical of past budgets, and allows staff to replace knockdown poles, poles at the end of their use-for-life, make utility box repairs and travelways, electrical upgrades, so that we can keep our streets and pathways and parking lots safely lit. The second project in the table are building facility projects that are in addition to those scheduled and funded by the city's Internal Service Fund. Projects include the replacement of standby generators at fire stations one, two, four, and City Hall, funding for the repair of structural wood columns at the Alameda Point Gym, a heavily-used facility, and replacement of roof drains at the Mastic Senior Center. All of these were unanticipated, and are needed to preserve and keep these critical facilities operational. This past summer, Council adopted an ADA plan that identifies accessibility barriers at city buildings and parks, and prioritizes removal of those barriers into various phases. City Council funded the first and largest phase of that barrier removal in the current capital budget, and that work is underway. The city's Accessibility Compliance Fund has accrued a fund balance, which is proposed to be invested in fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Shown here is a general fund allocation in fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven, to keep this important work going. While the combined total funding of five-hundred-and-fifty thousand over the two-year period is less than that recommended for Phase Two in the ADA plan, this amount better aligns with staff capacity to execute the work as Phase One is ongoing. As part of future budgets, additional funding will be requested to complete Phase Two and move on to subsequent phases. For park maintenance and park pathway repairs, projects that improve community safety were prioritized, such as fixing tripping hazards on pathways, making fence repairs, and replacing basketball court surfaces so that they can remain open to the public. However, while there is a one-point-three-million-dollar investment in parks shown here, replacement of playground equipment and the public restroom of the Grand Street Boat Launch is being deferred. Street safety is proposed to be funded at the full requested amount, because this project includes the important work of improving street safety for vulnerable users, including daylighting at intersections. Other safety measures implemented as part of this project include high-visibility crosswalks, curb bulbouts, and pedestrian refuge islands. This project also funds the fatal crash response program to address locations where traffic fatalities have occurred. This is a project in the city's strategic plan. Total funding for street safety over the two-year period is one-point-two million, with a six-hundred-thousand of general fund contribution shown here, and another six-hundred-thousand of transportation development impact fee that I'll show on a later slide. Neighborhood greenways are local traffic calm streets designed to give priority to people walking and biking, where bicyclists and motorists can share the road, and busy crossings are made safe. There are a total of nine streets planned to be converted to neighborhood greenways by two thousand and thirty, as laid out in the Act of Transportation Plan. Implementation will be phased, with the first phase converting the existing slow-street segments of Pacific, San Jose, and Morton, and Versailles in fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. And in addition to the one-point-two-million of general fund allocation shown here, there's an additional one-point-two-million each fiscal year of Measure BB that'll keep the project going in twenty-six, twenty-seven, and include an additional mile of neighborhood greenway to be planned and constructed using Measure BB dollars only. The Stargelav Complete Street Project will improve school crossings, provide active transportation, slow traffic, green the street, and add new bus stops when the AC Transit Line Nineteen will be rerouted there in the fall. The hundred thousand general fund allocation shown here leverages nearly six million of grant funds for improvements along this corridor. The US Department of Transportation awarded the city a sixteen-million-dollar construction grant for the Lincoln Marshall Pacific Corridor Improvement Project. This corridor is over three miles long and is a tier- This corridor is over three miles long and is a tier-one high-injury corridor. The design concept includes a road diet, bike lanes, a roundabout at Lincoln, Fifth and Marshall, crosswalk improvements, school frontage improvements, bus stop enhancements, and other improvements. The general fund allocation shown here is needed to augment Measure BB funds to complete design of this project in order to take advantage of the $16 million construction grant. The Fire Department is planning for a comprehensive emergency water supply system to protect the community in the event we have a total or partial loss of the East Bay mud water supply system. This plan is similar to plans and systems in Berkeley, Oakland, and San Francisco. The comprehensive emergency water supply system is composed of several modules with a total estimated cost of $16 million. As an initial step, staff prioritize the purchase of two trailer turntable reels, which enables the rapid mechanical deployment of large diameter fire hose after a major disaster to pump water from the estuary to a water truck for fighting fires. This investment of $400,000 was chosen for its immediate and practical benefits. Lastly, the Bay Farm Island Adaptation Project is a near-term sea level rise adaptation project to address two feet of sea level rise over the coming decades. The general funds allocated for this project will fund grant writing and serve as matching funds for potential grants. It will also allow the Oakland-Alameda Adaptation Committee, a broad coalition of shoreline communities and stakeholders, to continue working together to address sea level rise adaptation. In total, the total one-time proposed general fund allocation over the two-year period is just over $8 million and, again, already assumed in the budget presented last week and earlier this evening by Director McCarthy. The next few slides present projects listed by project category. The table includes the proposed funding amounts, funding source, and whether the project is specifically named in the city's strategic plan. The first category shown here is pavement signals and lighting, or what we call investments in existing transportation infrastructure. Funding is from those restricted transportation sources such as Measure BB and the Transportation Development Impact Fee. The total investment across the listed projects over the two-year period is nearly $16 million and includes paving of city streets and the replacement and upgrade of pavement markings, curb paint, and signs. In the city's strategic plan is a project to upgrade traffic signal system technology for reliability and safety, as well as reducing public safety response times. The proposed investment shown here for traffic signals and systems and emergency vehicle preemption will do just that. In case you were wondering what emergency vehicle preemption is, it's a specific technology designed to give emergency response vehicles a green light on their approach to a signalized intersection while providing a red light to conflicting approaches. This improves response time and increases safety. Lastly, safe, accessible, and well-maintained sidewalks are fundamental to mobility and accessibility in Alameda. Sidewalks are an important component of the city's ADA plan, and implementation of the ADA plan is a council strategic priority. The proposed funding shown here is for sidewalk repairs that are the city's responsibility, as well as a projection of property owner participation in the city's new program, making it easier for property owners to get repair work done. That is their responsibility. We've had great success over the first few months of this program and anticipate continued participation in the coming years. This next slide shows transportation system enhancements with a total $21 million investment across projects. Some of these projects I've already discussed, like street safety, as they have general fund allocation. Safe Routes to School is a county program that makes assessments of school sites and recommends changes to improve safety for students walking and biking to school. Work is already designed and funded for fiscal year 2526 and includes the sites such as the Academy of Alameda, Earhart Elementary, Edison, Franklin, Love, Mylan, and the NEA Community Learning Center. The funding shown here for 2627 is to design and construct improvements at Otis Elementary, Ruby Bridges, Bay Farm Elementary, and Alameda High School. Transit stop enhancements include the installation of benches and/or shelters, sidewalk reconstruction, red curb paint, and other bus stop amenities. City Council adopted the Act of Transportation Plan in 2022, demonstrating the city's commitment to safe and comfortable and accessible ways for people of all ages and abilities to walk and bike throughout the city. The plan outlines an ambitious set of projects in the 2030 infrastructure plan, and there's been considerable progress. This project, the Act of Transportation Plan Implementation, expands on the larger corridor improvement projects, implementing other priority projects in the plan such as separated bike lanes on Fifth Street and new bicycle parking citywide. The project will also start the planning process for the Park and Webster Street Low Stress Bike Facilities. Neighborhood greenways we discussed earlier, and the total proposed budget for this project is $3.6 million over the two-year period, including the Measure BB and general fund allocation. We also spoke earlier of the Stargelav Complete Streets with $100,000 general fund contribution leveraging the grant fund shown here on this slide. The city, in partnership with the City of Oakland, is advancing implementation of a movable bike and pedestrian bridge to create a multimodal access between Oakland's Jacklyn and Square and West Alameda. Caltrans awarded the city a $480,000 grant to continue studying the project, and $44,000 shown here in Measure BB is being proposed for the local match requirement of that grant. We previously discussed the Lincoln-Marshall Pacific Corridor Improvement Project with the general fund contribution towards design to take advantage of a $16 million construction grant. Shown here is the allocation of $4 million of Measure BB named funds that will also be used to complete design. Expanding public EV charging across the city is a priority in the city's strategic plan and climate action and resiliency plan. The public EV charging pilot will do just that, and will do it with grant funds from MTC. The Westline Drive Bus Q Jump Lane Project will identify a transit-only lane along Westline Drive and Eighth Street between Otis and Portola in the northbound direction. A dedicated bus lane will allow buses traveling northbound to Central to bypass general traffic queues. As part of a multimodal concept design process, this project also aims to identify protected bikeways on or adjacent to Westline and Eighth to close the Westline shoreline and Central Ave bike lane gap. The side shows over $23 million investment in the city's sewer, stormwater, shoreline, and adaptation projects, and projects include sewer rehabilitation, upgrades to the city's stormwater pipes and pump stations to prevent flooding, maintenance of the South Shore lagoons, and general shoreline maintenance. The Marina and Waterfront Repair Project will conduct a needs assessment of state lands areas that are not required to be maintained by a private operator and will identify high-risk areas requiring maintenance. Lastly, the city was a recipient of a Water Resource Development Act grant for the Oakland-Alameda Estuary Adaptation Project. This project focuses on sea level rise mitigation for the northern shoreline behind the Webster and Posey Tube. The project will address increased coastal stormwater and groundwater flooding for up to two feet of sea level rise over the coming decades. These funds are intended to fund grant writing and serve as matching funds for other potential grants and will continue to advance the planning and design of the project until more grants are obtained. Lastly, this is the last category. I know I'm a little long-winded here, but $86 million is quite a bit of investment. The last category is city buildings and facilities, and we have over $17 million in investment over the two-year period. The first item are scheduled facility repair projects in the city's Internal Service Fund. This includes various roof replacements and other general repairs, listed in more detail on the project sheet in your packet. The city is actively converting its fleet to a zero-emission fleet, and that demands the installation of EV charging at city building facilities. The city's vehicle replacement policy, whose focus is on greening the fleet, allows for available replacement funds to be used for this charging infrastructure. The investment shown here, $100,000 in each year, is just a start as we continue to work with MTC, who is providing the city technical assistance to develop an overall fleet charging plan as we continue to electrify the fleet. The next three items are investments at the library, with the first being an automated material handling system at the main library that will move, sort, and manage library materials, reducing manual labor and improving efficiency. The project will also include an automated book return inside the main library, as currently there is no interior book return. It's now time to reimagine the interior space of the main library that opened in 2006. Since that time, the services that the library offers and the way people use the library have changed. This project will develop design plans, furniture package, illustrations, and costs for implementation. Lastly, the library will be upgrading and replacing security cameras at the main library and branch libraries. The Day Center and Safe Sheltering Program includes a safe place to be indoors and receive meals and social services, emergency overnight shelter, and safe parking. The current location of the Day Center must be vacated for construction of the next phase of the reshape project. A pro-housing grant was obtained to relocate the Day Center to Building 2 at Alameda Point. The new facility will provide expanded space for confidential client meetings and larger training and support group meetings, additional overnight emergency beds, additional safe parking spaces, and space for showers and laundry. We spoke earlier of the ADA plan and general fund allocation in fiscal year 26 to implement this important work. Shown here is the contribution from the Accessibility Compliance Fund in 2526. The last three items are investments at Alameda Point with Alameda Point funds. This includes the rehabilitation of Pier 2, which is currently closed to birthing of large ships due to deterioration and deferred maintenance. It also includes a general repair and upkeep of the Big Whites, the former Navy senior officer housing, which is leased by the city at market rate, and includes the ongoing investment to address deferred maintenance and non-residential building items, building, non-residential buildings throughout Alameda Point, including things such as roof replacements, ceiling of building envelopes, upgrading security systems, paint, lead abatement, et cetera. To close, I will end on highlighting several notable strategic priority projects that are underway already with no additional funding being proposed in the capital budget. This includes construction of the Central Ave Safety Improvement Project, construction of the Clemente Ave Tilden Way Safety Improvement Project, which will be out to bid in the coming weeks, construction of the Jean Sweeney Open Space Connector Project, the Civic Center Parking Garage Safety Improvement Projects, the Grand Street Safety Improvement Projects from Shoreline to Ensignal, design of backbone infrastructure into the second phase of Alameda Point's adaptive reuse area, design and construction of the City Aquatic Center, and construction of Phase 2 of Estuary Park. This is a lot of work going on. And with that, I am available for clarifying questions, and I and staff are available for follow-up questions.
Thank you, Director Smith. That was an excellent, comprehensive report. Staff, council questions? I've got just a couple. Oh, Councilmember Jensen, just be sure to go ahead first.
Do you want to go up first?
No, go ahead.
My question is, if, I don't see it in here, but I wonder if you can comment on any potential costs that might, that you may have examined that might be related to the Oakland-Alameda Access Project in the area of transportation or infrastructure especially?
I'm not aware that we have any costs that's included in our capital budget. Is there?
I can speak to a little bit.
City manager, go ahead.
Yeah, so there isn't in the capital budget, but I can tell you that we did, there was recently, I think, a grant that was, the Alameda County Transportation Commission had just approved some additional money, or I guess the policy committee did, and it's going to the full commission.
You want me to jump in on that?
Yeah.
For the, for Little Woodstock?
For additional service for, and then we are also in conversations with them about ways that we, transportation kind of demand management. So we do think there are some other sources of funds that we're talking to them about that we might be able to access other grant funds that are available to be able to provide some, we're calling them TDM measures, or ways we can try to make this easier on folks by providing some alternative ways to get around.
Great, thanks.
Well, if I could just add a layer to that response. So I was at the, all three or four Alameda County Transportation Commission Policy Committee meetings yesterday, and yes, our Little Woodstock, the little yellow shuttle, got an additional $735,000 grant. It still has to be approved by the full commission at the end of this month. It would be unusual for the commission not to follow a policy committee recommendation. But when it comes to addressing and mitigating the impacts of the Oakland-Alameda Access Project, I will be back at the commission, jumping up and down on the table if they try to push too many of those expenses to Alameda, and I will say we have a new executive director of Alameda County Transportation Commission who's starting on June 1st. His name is Tony Tavares, and he is, until very recently, was the director of Caltrans statewide. So I plan to have a conversation with him accompanied by the city manager and the Public Works Director, not Public Works, Planning, Building, and Transportation Director, so TBD on some of that, but yeah, good question.
Well, we're very lucky to have your advocacy mayor. My other question for the Public Works Director, I didn't see the Fernside Project on here.
So the Fernside Project, I'm going to let our city engineer answer that question for
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Scott Wickstrom, city engineer. The Fernside is broken up into both a short-term project and a long-term project. The short-term project is already programmed in our regular paving project and will be constructed as part of that. Now, when we were last here at council, there was a request by council to do some additional traffic studies and then come back to council with a potential recommendation for some additional work at the intersection of High, Fernside, and Gibbons. If we come forward back with a recommendation, we may be coming back with a request for some additional funding at that time. It really depends on what the traffic study says. We don't want to prejudge that. When we talk about Fernside in the long term, that is subject to future grant applications in several years to come.
Thank you for clarifying that, Engineer Wickstrom. My last two questions are about money, and they are for the Public Works Director. I also, these are kind of questions, but kind of opinions too. The status, if you could comment, I heard you mention the $16 million grant from the Department of Transportation for Lincoln-Marshall and Pacific, and I just want to get your input that we are relying on that and when we might expect to receive it and when we would start the construction project.
So what's in the, thank you for the question. Yes, it is definitely on certain times. In my understanding and staff, if I get this wrong, please let me know, but we have a partially executed agreement for that, and we are still anticipating that to come. We thought it'd be no-regret action to do the design, even if the construction grant falls through, which we certainly hope it doesn't. It puts us in a shovel-ready position to obtain some other construction grant.
Well, thanks for paying attention to that. Hopefully, we will continue with that project. And my final comment or concern is with regard to another federal project, which is imposing tariffs on a lot of building materials, which could certainly impact some of our, many of our ongoing projects, especially lighting, pavement, et cetera.
Yeah, we haven't, it's hard, it's just so hard to predict.
What is the percentage today?
Yeah, it's very hard to predict. So we, I mean, there's not a specific number that we calculated. If there is some drastic change, we would need to come back and appropriate additional funds, but it's just too soon to tell what the impact's going to be. But yes, we are, we are watching and aware.
Well, thank you for a very comprehensive report and for keeping an eye on those unfortunate environmental issues.
And actually, don't go away, Director Smith. So I was listening to the report about the DOT award for Lincoln-Marshall Way because earlier this month I was in Washington, DC. I was chosen one of a dozen mayors in the country to be part of the Mayor's Institute on Pedestrian Safety, and we talked, we had former officials from U.S. Department of Transportation, and one of the things they said, I think you said, the contract is, or the grant is partially executed. What does that mean? And the reason I ask is one of the things they emphasized is the minute you get a grant award, execute it right away, and so the ink dries quickly.
Just so I don't get the details wrong, I'm going to have Director Ty come and answer that.
Welcome. Go ahead and introduce yourself, please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of city council, Alan Ty, Playing Building Transportation Director. So what we mean is, we came before the city council, received authorization to sign the agreement. So the city manager has signed the agreement. We have submitted the agreement back to the U.S. DOT, and they have not signed, and we're waiting for their response.
Okay, and I owe all of you a memo of things that I learned at this, the sessions of two intense days in DC, which I will discuss with you offline because I don't really want to share all the information, but sometimes it's possible to resubmit and change the wording a little. I will go into that offline. I will go into that offline. And then, Director Smith, you mentioned, I think it was on page eight of the presentation, about the property owner's sidewalk repair program. So tell us a little bit, well, first, for anyone who might not know what it is, give us a brief description. How is it going so far?
Yeah, thank you. So we launched a new program a couple of months ago. So just a bit of context, so the Streets and Highway Code places responsibility for sidewalk repair and maintenance on the adjacent property owner. The city has a longstanding practice of taking responsibility for repairs that are damaged by a street tree, so we pay and execute those repairs. We notify proper, previously before our program, would notify property owners of their responsibility to make repairs, and we left it to them to find a contractor, obtain permits, et cetera. And we found that that process was quite burdensome for property owners. And so as a way to try to promote more work getting done, we launched a program now that when we notify a property owner of their required repairs, we offer them the opportunity to literally check a box and sign a form, and the city will do the repairs for you and will send you an invoice. And program's been going really great. We've had 94 properties participate in the program. This is 70% participation rate, so 70% of the letters we've sent out. 10% of those that have participated have received some form of financial aid. It's on a sliding scale. We've had 10%, 10% of the people send the letter back saying, "Thank you, we're going to do it on our own." They are still hopefully going to do it on their own. We're tracking whether they will do it on their own. And then we've had a 20% non-response, or where we'll start to enforce. And those numbers are completely swapped from the way we did before, where the previous program, we had more of like a 20% compliance rate. So we've really shown dramatic success just in the first few months, and we're hopeful for more sidewalk work getting done.
Wow, thank you for that. That's really impressive. And I will just share with you that also, I do a lot of chit-chatting between meetings. We had like a series of meetings, and the San Leandro was, mayor was asking me, "So what do you all do about sidewalks that need repair in front of people's houses?" So I might be directing San Leandro's Public Works Director, too. Okay, and then I wanted to ask, and this might be a question for the Planning Building and Transportation Director, Alan Ty. We got a pro housing grant for $1 million. Do you want to, can you just explain what that was all about?
I think the pro housing, Amy, would be best. Is that for the day center?
Sure, but, well, the pro housing designation was what got us the grant, and that's what I wanted to hear about. I know about the day center, but I just, this is impressive. And so just tell us a little bit about how we came by this $1 million.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. So in the last couple of years, the State Department of Housing Community Development developed a program called the Pro Housing Designation, and it is a, you could consider it a prerequisite as an award, given the cities that have proven that they have adopted policies, land use regulations, and put zoning in place to facilitate housing development and the streamlining, and meeting streamlining targets that are set by the state. So the city of Alameda, we submit an application, we exceeded the minimum required number of points by, I think, 20-plus points, and we received the designation. And so the pro housing designation actually positions the city to be competitive for future state funding related to housing, related to other sources of revenue, and I believe the state is increasingly looking at pro housing designations as a prerequisite for funding eligibility.
And I thank you for the explanation. I just want to thank you and your staff for doing all the legwork and putting these processes in place, because as you can see, it literally paid off. And at a time like this, when every dollar that comes into the city is just really hard won and fought after, this is really impressive. Thank you. And I will also add, I'm a member of the League of California Cities Board of Directors, and it's something we've been clamoring for with the state. Give us more carrots. The state has plenty of sticks. If you don't do this, we're going to do that, we're going to do this. But it's like, for those of us who are doing the right thing, could we get a little credit? And so we got $1 million in credit. Thank you. And that is all my questions. Clarifying questions on this side of the dais? Seeing, hearing, none, one?
No, I do. Yes. Let's see, for the Director Aaron Smith, on page nine is the Oakland-Alameda Estuary Bridge. I think I heard you use the word movable bridge. Did I hear that correctly? What is?
I did say that.
Yes, can you just briefly?
I'm going to have Rochelle, who is the project lead, be able to speak more intelligently to that.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Ashcraft, and councilmembers, Rochelle Wheeler, Senior Transportation Coordinator. Yeah, the bridge that would go over the estuary would have to be movable, and so that's what we've been planning in all of the design studies. How it opens is still to be determined, whether it's a bascule, which does what you heard us doing, or it's just a lift bridge, but it has to be movable mainly to allow the Coast Guard cutters to go through, but also taller sailboats.
Okay, interesting. Thank you. It just caught my ear.
And the team is working with engineers, not only a bridge engineer we work with, but also the Coast Guard Bridge Engineers, so.
Great. Second question, again, Director Aaron Smith. So the, on page eight is the pavement program. So we're looking at $10 million over two years for roads. So as you well know, MTC comes out annually with their road grade, and we are, our grade as of the last report is fair. So we're, there's very good, good, and we're fair. Does the $10 million bring us close to going, at least to good, or perhaps the combination of the long complete streets programs that we're doing? I mean, how can we get back to at least good? What would be the budget that's needed, for example?
Yeah, our city engineer is going to speak to that.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Desog. We, every few years, we do a comprehensive evaluation of the condition of all of our streets within the city. It's something that MTC helps support and functionally requires us to do as well. And as we do that, we get a report, and they basically run different scenarios about how much investment is necessary to maintain the status quo, how much investment is necessary to raise your PCI from fair to good, and really how much deferred backlog you have.
Exactly.
I wish I had all those numbers off the top of my head, but I do know that as of 2022, so we're talking three years ago, it's a little bit older money, we needed $6.8 million per year to maintain our existing PCI. Okay. I also know that, and I don't recall this exact number, but it was well over $20 million of deferred maintenance over the course of time. So to answer your question, is $10 million going enough? No, not close. We are set to get our streets reevaluated this year. The report comes out usually January, February of '26, is when we'll get that, the final report, with the kind of new baseline numbers, the new deferred amounts. But the short answer is, we do need more money.
Great, well, thank you. Appreciate that. So just to reiterate, so we really should be spending roughly $6 million a year just to maintain, but we really, we don't want to just maintain. But what we're budgeting right now is roughly $5 million. So there's a delta there that we need to be aware of.
Correct.
Okay. Third question, Director Aaron Smith again. On page 11, there's the, hold on, page 11. There's the reimagining interior space at Main Library. Back in 2003 or 2004, I can't remember, you know, we had to make some very big decisions, and we had to value engineer certain elements of the Main Library construction. And as a result, if you all know, when you go into the library, the barrel vault ceiling is very impressive, but in value engineering it, it kind of affected the impressiveness of the barrel vault ceiling and the effect that it's supposed to have as people come into the library. So the question is, would the reimagining interior space, could that conceivably include ways to think, how can we, you know, capture the luster of the barrel vault ceilings?
Yeah, I think it's a great question, and Director Eitner is most familiar with that project, and I believe he's here this evening, yes.
Thank you.
Well, but as Director Eitner approaches the podium, I co-chaired the campaign to build the library, and I was on the library building team. I don't recall value engineering impacting the barrel vault ceiling. I remember there was a very dramatic lovely staircase that we had to value engineer out.
Yeah, and my, the conversations that I remember is, some people said that that affected. So the question is, is there a way to use this to do an analysis?
Or what do you have in mind in reimagining the library, maybe, also?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Mike Eitner, Library Director. We can certainly look at that, what the, what we're look, the biggest part of the project is imagining we have too many shelves. You know, as we've shifted to digital, we have, and there are areas that are, you know, magazines, there are hardly any magazines left. We have a lot of magazine shelving and nothing to put on it. Can we reuse the space to make it more useful to the community for their needs now? We have a great need for study rooms. We only have four. Can we find more study rooms? Can we find the capacity to have a maker space? We have one small 3D printer, can we do something more along that line? We're also using this project to look at furniture. All the furniture at the Main Library is going to be 20 years old next year, and it's showing its age. We're reaching a critical mass in chairs. They're falling apart, and so we need to figure out how we have enough chairs for people to sit on. We're also looking at ways to operate the library more efficiently, and that would include going to a single service point on each floor. Right now, we operate three desks at the Main Library. We offer, we operate two on the first floor and one on the second. And if we can find a way to reimagine what the space looks like on the first floor, get down to one service desk, then that will free up the library staff to do more programs in the library and outside the library. With the three service points, just kind of the way the building is arranged right now, it's not easy to kind of take one of those away and feel like we have a good visual on as much of the floor as we possibly can. So we can look at that, but we're, we want to also just like, how can we make the Main Library the gem that it is now for the next 20 years? And we have a lot of opportunities to do that.
Great, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Great answer, thank you. Any other clarifying questions before we go to public comment? All right, let's have our long-awaited public comment. Madam Clerk?
Terri Rose?
Welcome, Speaker Rose.
Welcome, Madam Mayor and City Council. I have to first say, I am so impressed. I've lived here for 40 years. I've never been to one of these meetings, and I'm bowled over and humbled, and I'm kind of embarrassed to be up here talking, so I will just say that. In the 40 years I've lived here, I've lived by lots of parks. I live by Tillman Park, Franklin Park. I play at Lincoln Park every day, and I live by Washington Park. So I want to say, I think our parks are the grand jewel of this town. They're like amazing, and Director Long is a phenomenal person to work with, so I just want to give big kudos to him. And, you know, I never really thought much about parks. My kids were, played in all the parks, they went to all the camps, and so, and I played tennis, but mostly at the Harbor Bay Club. But really, I just can't say enough about the community space they are, the community builder they are. They're beautiful. I invite any of you to go to Lincoln Park on a Saturday and see what life is all about. There are people gazing at the sun, there are kids playing, there are adults playing, there's parties going on, there are life celebrations, there are death celebrations. It's everything. And so I'm up here to talk about the Lincoln Park pickleball courts. I won't go into all the great things about pickleball, but just to advocate to go into that small 2%, to recognize that three years ago, a very expensive paint job was done on the pickleball courts, and then the basketball courts were demolished, which cracked all the pickleball courts. So not a very bright thing to do, in my opinion. They're falling apart, and we work with ARPD to patch them and keep them up, but it's going to need to be redone. We keep it safe for all the elderly people, including me, that play there. But it's got to get done, it's got to be in a budget. And again, I'm humbled, we can't complete with the police department and the library and all of those other things, but I'm here to just advocate and lay the foundation for the future of it. We opened a second site, thanks to Director Long, at Lydecker Park. It's full. We are at improvised day camp on holidays. People drop their kids off, and they play pickleball, and we teach them. And we have 93-year-olds playing, and it's a real community thing. I've done a lot of sports. It's a true use and truly inclusive. We go out, we represent Alameda and other Parks and Rec Department things, so we are ready to partner, ready to raise some money to help fund some of that. And really, I just want to say thank you, so thank you.
Thank you. Our next public speaker?
Charles Leuson.
Welcome.
Hello. Hi, good evening, Madam Mayor.
Can you make the microphone where it's comfortable for you?
Hi, good evening, Madam Mayor and members of city council. I was here last week talking about pickleball, and, well, I was talking to my friend, Jeanette Abbe, and she mentioned that she had, she knows a bunch of the city council members in fundraising, and she was asking them, like, what can she do to, you know, improve pickleball in Alameda? And, you know, like what was mentioned earlier, there was like a ranking of streets, you know, good, very good, and fair. And from my point of view, I've been playing in different courts around the Bay Area. San Leandro has a great, brand-new pickleball court. I would say it's very good, and most of the courts are really very good. And I just wanted to echo what Terri Rose had said. We hope that there will be more investment in pickleball surfaces. We have, as she said, Lincoln Park and Lydecker Park has only two pickleball courts that we have. And I would say, you know, being frank, I would say the ranking, I would say, would be more like fair, instead of good or very good. So just as, you know, the council members had advised my friend, Jeanette, that what should we do? Just come here to advocate. So that's what I'm doing today, and hopefully that you will look into doing the investment in resurfacing both of the courts. Aside from that, I would say, again, I would echo what Terri Rose was saying. Pickleball is a great sport. There, you have kids playing it, you have seniors playing it, and it's very easy to pick up. As for my own experience, you know, my wife, she grew up more like a bookish person, so she would always say, like, she was hardly the person who would be picked on when there's like a sports. She would probably be the last one. And, you know, and I'm proud to say that she's picked up pickleball and she's become quite good at it. So that just shows like how accessible it is as a sport. And it's accessible not only for kids, but also for seniors, and I think that's one of the great things that can improve the livability of Alameda, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
That was our last speaker.
Ah, okay. Gosh, don't you love public comments that are so positive? We love all public comments, what am I saying? But no. All right, back to us, council. So we are just, again, giving input and direction. Anything further anybody wants to add? And again, I really commend you all for putting that together. That's a lot of, a lot of information. Oh, I do have one question now that I think of it. Let's see if my very temperamental iPad will let me go back. Can somebody just let me look over their shoulder? I want it, I want that list of the projects that didn't have funding. It was at the very end, or maybe, can you pull it up, Madam Clerk? From the, I just, you've got the hard copy, thank you. It does this, it just freezes. It's the, yeah, it's in the last. It is page 12 of the notable ongoing strategic plan projects, no additional capital funding. Does that mean because we have the funding that's needed, or...? Does that mean because we have the funding that's needed or something else?
Yep, it's, the funding's available and already appropriated.
Phew, okay, lovely, that was all I had. So did you have some, yes, oh.
I just, I have good news that I wanted to share with Council regarding pickleball and resurfacing at the Lincoln pickleball courts. That confirmed with Director Long is already planned. As we mentioned, we really focused our dollars this year on safety projects and we felt that was one of them for Lincoln. So he is allocating a substantial amount, $100,000 to $150,000 to re, fully appropriately research, not just repaint, but resurface those courts in this biennial budget.
Wow, and do we know, we don't do a plazet account, so we always say applaud in your heart, but do we know when that project would start?
It might be in the second year, but we'll, we'll need to confirm that.
Okay, so it would require a little patience. And then I would imagine, when you're resurfacing and doing all that, a court would have to be closed for
That's correct.
A little bit of time, which would require traveling to San Leandro? I don't know, but patience, what do you think?
Certainly, there's always growing pains anytime you're doing any improvements. Yes, it probably would be six to eight weeks would be my estimate. Don't hold me to that. And we still have the courts at Lydecker Park, there's four courts there. Plus, I'm sure Director Long could speak more than I could to the timing of Estuary Park, but Estuary Park Phase Two, we're also adding at least four more pickleball courts to that project as well.
Awesome, we will make time to hear more about improving pickleball courts. I'm going to make that microphone your height.
Yeah, thanks, Director Long here for ARPD, Mayor, Council, thank you. Estuary Park will be going out to bid here in July. And so by putting the courts in the second year, hopefully that'll be just almost enough time for the Estuary Park to come online
In the first fiscal year.
When that starts in the second year.
Oh, oh.
It just depends a little bit on timing, but that will be the hope that we would have those open.
And how many courts again are those at Estuary Park?
There's four courts planned. If bids come in early, the alternate is to add two more. So hopefully bids will come in.
Yes, no, it's, we're only accepting good news tonight, yeah, yeah, wow. Thank you both, that's, I'd like to add on a high note. So any further council comments have to be positive? No, you can say whatever you want, Councilmember Jensen, also a pickleball player, right?
Yeah, I actually am, and I, thank you. I want to both point out and thank Director Long and thank Teri Rose because I, I do appreciate that the communication is there and that even though we may not have all the funds to do all these projects that are, you know, quickly, but we do, we do know and we do work with the community, thanks to Director Long, to determine what the issues are. And I think recently, I did actually hear from someone who was mentioned earlier and I think the lights have been addressed at Lydecker Park, is that correct? The challenge, that was the challenge for some players there?
Yes, Councilmember Jensen, they've been repaired multiple times, but we've converted them to LED, but we still have trouble with one light that we're working on. But they're actively out there and there's enough light out there to play right now.
Well, that's great.
But we're trying to get the rest.
And as a tennis player, I find that the courts that I play on at Washington, at Cruzy, those are, those are beautiful too and the resurfacing is going very well there. So thank you, I do have a question for you, Director Long, as well as for Library Director Eitner. It came up briefly, I think, about the Friends of the Library and the Friends of the Park. And I just wanted to get some input for me and for, as we have this budget workshop, about how those organizations can support the limited funds that the city has.
Yes, thank you for the question. The Friends of the Parks are very integral to our operation. They've helped fund Tillman, the scoreboards at Estuary that were just installed. And so they really help out with multiple things and multiple projects, sometimes playground funding. As Director Smith had mentioned, these next two years, we're not funding anything for playgrounds in the capital budget. So we're going to really lean on them as larger repairs come up. And so we'll try to focus our partnerships with them. And so they've been a really good partner.
Thank you. Director Eitner? Library can get some new chairs, maybe?
Yes, so the Friends of the Alameda Free Library are a wonderful organization and I'd like to remind the Friends that that organization and I were the same age. They celebrated their 50th anniversary last year and I turned 50 last year too. So they've been doing great things for us for 50 years. Right now, the Friends support the Summer Reading Challenge, which starts June 1st. They provide all of the funding that the library has to offer programs to the public. The library's current budget does not have any money to pay honoraria, to pay speakers, anything of that sort, supplies for programs. That's all supported by the Friends. This year, I also did ask them if they could help us with some additional resources for eBooks, audio eBooks, and they were able to help out with that. So they're a wonderful organization, a wonderful partner. And I believe once we have a project and an idea for what we want to do at the Main Library, I think the Friends will activate and will find a way to help fundraise for that.
Excellent, well, thank you. I know our community always steps up for these things.
They do, for sure.
And while you're up here and on the subject of the Friends, it made me remember that I believe they did the furnishing for the children's library when the new library opened.
They did, I thought they did the whole library, actually.
Oh, they, you know, there was a lot of fundraising going on. If you look at their plaques on the different tables, people donated. It was, I think, relatively easy fundraising because people were so excited about this new library after all these years. But would you like to make a plug for a used book sale that's happening soon?
Yeah, the Friends Used Book Sale starts on Wednesday, goes through Saturday to the Main Library. Please come, great bargains. And the Books for Friends, which is the bookstore that the Friends operates out of the Main Library, is, they just opened on Wednesday, so they're now open Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. So, and they're, they have great deals all the time. And all those, those resources benefit the library, as does the cafe. I'd like to remind folks that the Library Cafe is completely volunteer-run. That's, the Friends run that cafe. And a lot of library cafes have come on hard times because the overhead is like, it's not profitable to operate them. But our Friends manage to staff that cafe and keep it open. And so we're very grateful for that, too.
Yeah, and it's just such a nice welcoming place for people to come in and get a cup of coffee or pastry and visit or meet or whatever.
Absolutely, and we also see some of the high school students during open lunch to come in, get a cup of noodles. So yeah, it's a, it's a great space.
Libraries for everyone, okay, remember that, everyone go get something at the book sale. Okay, so Steph, do you have enough, enough direction on this to keep you busy for a while? Great.
Yes, we do, thank you.
All right, well, thank you so much. So then I will close item 3B and we will move on to item 4, oral communications.
There are no speakers.
There are no speakers, so with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, it is 8:56, not even 9 o'clock. Go enjoy the rest of your evening. Thank you so much, Steph, this was a lot of work to get, to put together and we really appreciate you, thank you.